The council will be in session. All the council members, please come to the council chamber. We have eight members present. We have eight members present. We need two for quorum. Are going to be reminded of. Mr. Pierre, Mr. Glanter, Mr. Holden, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, Walters, Ferraro. Ten members present. A quorum, Mr. President. Yeah, the council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the 22nd day of March, the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Hernandez moves. Mrs. Chick second. If there's no objection, unanimous vote. The next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objection, unanimous vote. The next item.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item six through 11, Building and Safety has requested those be continued to April 14th.
Item six through 11, is there any objections to that? If not, that will be the order.
Item 26, Councilmember Chick has requested that be continued to March 24th.
Item 26?
Yes, Mr. President.
Is there any objections to that? March 24th? Members, it appears that we will not have a quorum on March 24th because of the funeral of the police officer that was killed. So why don't we continue that until the Tuesday? Okay? No objections, that will be continued until the 28th. Next item.
Item 47G, which is a closed session item. The city attorney has advised that be continued to Tuesday, March 28th.
Okay, there's no objections, that will be the order on 47G. Okay, that will be the order.
Public hearing items, items one through five. Item one is Planning Land Use Management Committee report.
Any discussion on that? Anybody want to be heard on that item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on item one? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate to vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number two is also Planning Land Use Management Committee report. It's a general plan amendment, Southeast Deli community plan.
Is there anybody in the audience wants to be heard on that item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate to vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items three and four are street lighting district hearings.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item three or four? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on those items?
Continue that till the 12th.
Okay, well, those are automatically continued until April 12th. So three and four will be continued till April 12th. Next item.
Item number five is an appeal of Planning Land Use Management Committee report to be submitted.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number five? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on those items?
Continue that till the 12th.
Okay, well, those are automatically continued until April 12th. So three and four will be continued till April 12th. Next item.
Item number five is an appeal of Planning Land Use Management Committee report to be submitted.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number five? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate to vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items three and four are street lighting district hearings.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item three or four? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on those items?
Continue that till the 12th.
Okay, well, those are automatically continued until April 12th. So three and four will be continued till April 12th. Next item.
Item number five is an appeal of Planning Land Use Management Committee report to be submitted.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number five? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items 12 through 21, public hearings have been held.
Members of the council, those public hearings have been held on those, but we do have a lot of cards on 13, a few cards on 12, a few cards on 14. What is your pleasure? 13 is called special?
Mr. President, on item 12, are they all in favor?
They seem to be, yes.
Yeah, if they're all in favor, then I would ask that we move forward.
Okay, 12, 13 is called special?
16, please, too, John.
16, special? Okay, we have.
14, special.
14, special? Okay, we have 12, 15, 18 through 21 before us. Prepare the roll, tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
John, forthwith on 15, please.
Forthwith on 15. Forthwith on 20.
Mr. President, forthwith on item 12.
Forthwith on item 12.
And I'd like to thank the residents of Hoover Adams who worked so hard to create that historic district. But congratulations.
And we second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next item.
Items which public hearing have not been held, items 22 through 46.
We do not have any cards on those. Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Forthwith on item 21 also. Any specials by council members? That's 22 through 46?
Yes, Mr. President.
Any specials?
Forty.
Forty-two.
Forty-two is called special? Forty-five?
Forty-three.
Item number 33 has three reports on the file. That should be called special also, Mr. President.
Okay. What, Ms. Sikowski, which one did you? Okay, let's see if we got this straight now. 22 through 46 with the exception of 26, which has already been continued. Was that continued? Thirty-three is special. Forty-two, forty-three, forty-five, special. Prepare the roll on a balance. Tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on 34. Must be something in San Pedro. It's the water. Next item.
Mr. President, item 47 are the closed sessions. You wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes.
On the continued agenda, items 48 and 49?
Forty, forty-nine. Forty-eight and forty-nine. Any discussion on those items? Forty-eight and forty-nine?
Item 49 has two reports on the file.
It has two reports.
We have the community and economic development, and we have the personnel committee.
Did you have anything made from 48? That's on the contract.
Forty-nine.
Company for the economic development. Oh, I thought we were talking about 48. Forty-eight passed, okay. I had questions on 48. I don't have questions on 49.
Forty-nine has two reports. Okay, prepare the roll on 48. Tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
We'll call 49 special.
Yeah, and forthwith on item 48, Mr. President.
Forthwith on 48. Next item.
Item number 12 called special?
Could we have some quiet in the council chamber, please? Mr. Holden, Mr. Holden, why don't you go in the back room and argue with that gentleman? That's no gentleman, it's Mark.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 13.
Item, members of the council, we have a lot of cards. Ms. Sikowski, has there been a public hearing on this?
Mr. Pacheco reminds me, over two hours. But I do think we have an awful lot of people in the audience, and I would move a 10-minute public hearing. 10 minutes, 10 minutes, well, let's make it 10 on each side. Make it 20.
10 minutes on each side? Is there any objections to that?
Let me point out to those, Ms. Sikowski, have any suggestions who would go first?
That's here for the proponents first.
Those in favor? All right, those in favor, we're going to give you 10 minutes. So if you have particular people you want to be heard, we're not going to hear all of the cards because some of us have to catch a plane tomorrow, and we want to get over with this. So those in favor of this proposal, would you please send somebody up? I don't know which is which. You got the yellow and you got the red. Red is against. Okay, those in favor? Okay, yellow's against. Those in favor, red? Would you please come forward? If you want to be heard, the timer's going to start running right now.
Wendy? Terry? Hi, can I start?
What is your name, please?
My name is Pam Wilkinson. I'm a 20-year resident of LA. I felt it my duty to collect signatures in all 15 districts. With all these signatures, I found 90% of LA residents I spoke with agreed there is a public safety hazard, and they support the ordinance. They want more to be done than just catch a pack of dogs or a stray because they know another pack or stray will be back next week or even tomorrow. All 1,500 people in here support the ordinance. I'm representing the city all throughout Los Angeles these signatures are from. They want the city to go to the source of the problem, which is spay and neuter. Council needs to decide who they want to protect. The proud homeowner and the children? Or do you wish to protect those that are violating the children and the proud homeowner? Thank you. These signatures are all for council. Fifteen of them.
The next person, please. Now, don't applaud because that just takes away from your time. Your name, please?
My name is Lila Brooks, Director of California Wildlife Defenders. An important factor has been omitted from all the reports, namely the stricter enforcement of the leash laws. Large domestic dogs are turned loose every night in the hills, joined by feral dogs. These large dog packs are predators that killing fawns and small domestic pets for which the coyotes are being blamed. They also breed with coyotes, creating a new breed, the most undesirable hybrids. I propose that animal control officers be assigned to the hills to patrol the hills and cite all those dog owners who turn their dogs loose at night. I have come before the Animal Regulation Commission way back in 1974 and before the city council in 1992 stating that Los Angeles has a dog problem and not a coyote problem. I strongly urge this council to enact this ordinance for the benefit of the community and not pay attention to those who are not concerned with the welfare of this community by their own pocketbooks, the greedy breeders.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Susan Taylor, and I'm the Executive Director of Actors and Others for Animals, and we are the leading advocate of pet sterilization in the city. If the city approves this revised ordinance, not only will be able to motivate pet owners to alter their pets, but we will be able to motivate our major corporate donors to offer new additional spay-neuter programs aimed at solving this problem. Actors and Others for Animals did just that after Mark Ridley Thomas called for an ordinance. We instituted a new program to sterilize pit bulls free of charge. That program still stands. We have done over 1,200 to date, meaning conservatively, we have stopped 32,000 puppies from being born. Today, I am also here to tell you that Actors and Others is ready to put its money where its mouth is. By pledging by pledging an additional $50,000 in spay-neuter subsidies to LA pet owners if you adopt the proposed tougher spay-neuter policy. This new pledge will supplement the more than $325,000 we spend each year in spay-neuter and veterinary subsidy support services. We will commit this $50,000 to areas of greatest need to assist low or limited income pet owners. Actors and Others is prepared to do its part. Please do your part and support this long overdue revision.
Good morning, council members. My name is Laura Beth Heisen. I volunteer with LA Animal Services. 60,000 animals are killed by LA Animal Shelters every year, plus 40,000 roaming stray dogs in our city. Pretty... The question is, how many of these animals were born from animals who had been sterilized? None of them. It's pretty easy to figure out that our problems start with the unsterilized animals. Dan Knapp says LA Animal Shelter budget needs $21 million a year. $330 per shelter animals. Thinking about how many animals can come from one unsterilized animal, the $80 per year increase to be paid by owners who do not sterilize is quite minimal, far less than the city's cost. The proposed ordinance simply shifts a little more of the financial burden where it belongs, to those who choose not to sterilize. It's senseless and futile to argue about segments, those who breed professionally as a hobby or by accident. All unsterilized animals can and do add to the problem. The ordinance will make a huge difference with the typical pet owner.
Sergeant, would you get these people here, move them out? Mr. Holden is concerned about the noise.
Ordinary, everyday people who simply need more motivation to sterilize. More shelter... Most shelter animals come from these homes. People whose friends said they would take the puppies but then backed out. Those whose animals accidentally got pregnant. This ordinance will not force anyone to sterilize. It only makes the consequences of a choice not to sterilize more in line with today's realities of animal overpopulation, its tragedies, and its public dangers.
Thank you. We have other people who want to be heard and we only have 10 minutes.
I'm Terry Austin. I'm President of the Amanda Foundation. The Amanda Foundation is the city's largest customer for taking dogs and cats out of the shelter and as a result, I myself am in the shelters on a very regular basis and I can attest to the fact that a large number of the animals in the shelters are purebred animals. And another significant number are taken into private rescue that never end up in the shelters. The dogs that we have a problem with specifically in this city are filling our pounds to overflowing. Pits, rots, Akita's, shepherds, Dobbies, boxers, chows, all the dogs that are considered attack dogs. These dogs are both bred by people who attend shows and people who don't, but the end result is the same. There are a lot of big aggressive dogs on our streets and in our shelters. Too many. I realize that this week you've been given a lot of statistical information and when I read the opposition's big white binder, I saw that it's exactly the same statistical information. The only difference is we see the glass half-full and they see it half-empty. When they point to a city and says they say they've only had a 20% increase in their licensing fees, we say, hey, great, that city had a 20% licensing increase. What we know is the differentials are working. They're working to varying degrees in various cities. We feel that we've brought the best of all the cities together. No one can say that this differential ordinance won't work because this one is precedent-setting and has not been tried. This one has enforcement, it has services, and it has education as a full package. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next. There's two, three minutes left.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Zepian. As a pet owner, it hurts me to see the large amount of dogs that are presently wandering the streets of our cities. I strongly believe that out of the trillions and millions of dollars that our government spends each year, that with just a fraction of this, animals could be taken out of the streets into shelters where instead of being killed three days after cared, could be given to them and a greater chance to being adopted. And if spay and neutering is an essential help to the control of animal population, a small part from that fraction, a trillions and millions of dollars, should be given to making this surgical procedure free to pet owners. Thank you.
Please.
Hello, my name is Erica Bronson. I am here to represent the Coalition for Pets and Public Safety. Let me tell you who we are, how we see the problem, and what we would like to do together with the city. Number one, we are not an animal group.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Hello?
Point of order, Mr. President. It seems to me that we all should at least be able to hear the speakers when they are speaking, whether they are pro or con. So if the sergeants can be instructed to help people stay a little quieter, it would be very useful.
You understand my problem now?
Yes, I do. I'm here to help you, sir.
All right, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. As I said, I am here to represent the Coalition for Pets and Public Safety. We are a group of business people and others that have banded together to help the city as a public-private sector cooperation. I sat on the Board of Animal Regulation in the '60s. I have seen the problem in the last 35 years go from bad to worse. We have spent more of the taxpayers' and your constituents' money for killing animals in shelters and not enough for spay and neuter. The only solution that we have at this time, since it is an overpopulation problem, is spay and neuter. We would like to help the city predicated upon that this ordinance passes. We have the funds and we have the money in the bank to buy two mobile, fully-equipped spay-and-neuter vans to go into the districts where it is most desperately needed. We also have corporate funding from Taco Bell Fast Food, from Burger King, AAA Fast Food, from insurance companies to... Because these corporations see the problems day by day to help us with low-cost and free-cost spay and neuter. The third thing we would like to do, we would like to fully equip the spay-and-neuter clinic with its in North Central. It's in Councilman...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to listen to one more speaker because we interrupted you a little bit. Just one more speaker and that's all. So please, the rest of you can be seated. Go ahead.
Thank you for listening to me. My name's Dr. Julianne Ryan Johnson. I'm President of the Southern California Veterinary Medical Association. And as you know, our interest is in the care and well-being of the animal community. We'd like to thank you for recognizing the large number of animals roaming in the streets and the safety and dangers it presents to the community as well as the animals. You're all very aware of the tremendous number of animals being euthanized each year and that number's unacceptable. We recognize the need for an ordinance to address the importance of spaying and neutering our pets. Altered pets from a veterinary's perspective are much easier to deal with. You have less vicious animals, but as far as the general health, it produces a much healthier animal in the long run, less chances of cancer and other issues. Laughter and planned breeding of animals should include licensing and payment of appropriate taxes. Education is critical to engaging the public in the effort to control the animal population and the need to properly care for their pets. The SEVMA stands ready to work with the city and the main groups to develop programs to implement the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. That ends a public hearing on the...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too, but you're out of order. Now, all those who fill cards in favor, we will make those part of the file. Would you... Those now in opposition, would you please come forward and have your... Whoever your main guns are, but you have 10 minutes.
My name is Charles Ober. This binder is the General Manager's Report from the Department of Animal Services for 1998, 1999. It makes very interesting reading. I hope you take the opportunity to read it. There is absolutely no question that our city faces a problem of too many stray dogs roaming the streets of Los Angeles, threatening the safety of its residents, particularly children, and that there are too many dogs and cats entering our shelter system. There has been an emotional outcry that the only solution to solve this problem is to tax individual pet owners and breeders to force them to spay and neuter all animals. This is an emotional reaction that ignores the facts that our current system is showing positive results and it ignores the statistics that when other cities have implemented a high differential licensing and breeder's permit, the effect has consistently resulted in negative impact. Let me address the statement that the current system is working. Stray animals entering the shelter system for 1998, 1999 is down 10.6%. Owned animals entering our shelters is down 9.1%. Euthanasia is down 12.4%. Most importantly, at the public safety hearing on March 6, General Manager Dan Knapp proudly announced that due to the efforts of his department, the number of stray dogs roaming the streets of Los Angeles has been reduced from 44,000 to 26,000, a 40% reduction. The failure of high differential licensing and permits, we have presented to each of your offices and the CLA's office reports from San Mateo, King County, Washington, Montgomery County, Maryland, Camden, New Jersey. All have either discarded this proposal or dramatically reduced the differentials or they are currently struggling with the realization of the negative results of this ill-conceived approach. The Los Angeles's current efforts are showing positive results. Take the time to allow the CLA's office to evaluate the data that we provided.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. May I have the next speaker?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Mary DeBlasi. I'm the legislative advocate in the state of California, the city of Los Angeles, and the county of Los Angeles for the California Federation of Dog Clubs and the Coalition of Responsible Dog Owners. I won't take your time because you have many constituents behind me who want to be heard, but I will echo Mr. Ober's statements in the fact that we have presented to the chief analyst, Judah Steele, inconceivable proof that this has not worked in other municipalities. Just as yesterday, you sent the Rampart investigation to an outside source, we ask you to evaluate this through your chief analyst's office and have them come back and report that this indeed will work for LA. Let's have something that works for LA, not emotionally, but factually. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Joan Miller and I am with the Cat Fanciers Association, the world's largest registry of pedigreed cats in the world. On behalf of CFA, I would like to state strongly that we are in opposition to the ordinance. We don't believe that it will solve the problems that have been described as insurmountable. A quick fix solution is not going to deal with problems that have built up over a period of about 15 years. CFA considers the preservation of our rare and historic breeds to be a very important thing. Pedigreed cats are rarely found in any shelter. Cat fanciers went to all six shelters in Los Angeles and found only three pedigreed cats. The major, unanticipated brunt of this ordinance will fall on the responsible animal owners and those are breeders of purebred dogs and pedigreed cats and also private individuals that are kind to the unowned feral cats, thousands of Los Angeles citizens whose only crime is that they love animals. Conversely, the ordinance, accompanied by threats of aggressive enforcement tactics, cannot change the behavior of individuals who let their animals roam and haphazardly reproduce. It will change for the worse the situation of well-meaning families who have accidentally produced a litter of puppies or kittens. These citizens may fear taking steps to find homes for them or even taking them to a shelter. Actually, a newspaper ad or a trip to the veterinarian could lead to hundreds of dollars for permits and fines, according to this ordinance. We understand the city has been promised and we heard this morning substantial funds from rescue organizations to implement affordable spay-neuter plans in conjunction with the ordinance. We suggest why can't these plans be put in place initially rather than in conjunction with an owner's and breeding permit proposal? In summation, I hope that you will look at all of the facts that have been presented to you, that you will analyze this and come up with a rational solution that will take care of the problems of LA and not penalize the responsible people.
Thank you, ma'am. May I have the next speaker? Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, my name is Captain Hagerty. I'd like to forget about these responsible breeders and the people that want to spay all the animals. I'd like somebody to look at your figures. Your figures say that you'll make an extra $69,000 with implementing this plan. I think that's an inflated figure, but those are your figures, $69,000. It's only going to cost you $870,000 to implement it. I don't think you have to figure it out. You take a quick look at it and you see it doesn't pay.
Good morning. My name's Tom Powers. I'm the president of the Kennel Club of Beverly Hills. We take as our service area the city of Los Angeles and the city of Beverly Hills. We're generally opposed to this ordinance, but I want to bring some fact to your mind. Approximately every other household in the United States owns a dog. That's one in two households owns a dog in the United States. That's true in Los Angeles. This ordinance will not diminish the demand for dog ownership in Los Angeles. What it will do is drive the breeders in Los Angeles out of town and force the demand to be met from out-of-area dogs produced in the nature of a cash crop by puppy mills that are outside of the state. I think then you get more dogs on the street. You get more less healthy dogs on the street. I want you to consider that before you pass the ordinance. The other thing I've heard here a couple of times this morning that there's a lot of money waiting for the city to have if they just pass this ordinance. If these people are sincere, I think they would give you the money now and solve the problem.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Coleman and I work as a clinical nutritionist with many Los Angeles veterinarians. Many of my clients are local breeders who also show their cats and dogs and in my opinion, the LA breeders and exhibitors rank among the most responsible pet owners in the country. However, they cannot afford this tax. I would like to respectfully request that you reject the proposed so-called pet overpopulation ordinance coming up for vote. Decisions regarding spaying, neutering, and when to breed belong in the hands of the experts, the breeder and their veterinarian, not the city of Los Angeles. There is no doubt that LA Animal Regulation has a problem, but turning hobby breeders into criminals and blaming them for the pet overpopulation problem is downright prejudicial. The breeding and showing of these animals is the love of their lives. Don't destroy pedigreed breeding because the powers that be can't do their job and enforce the well-thought-out laws currently on the books, like the leash law. I also do not feel that cat breeders belong in this discussion. Our streets are certainly not being terrified by bands of Persian and Siamese running wild. Please use common sense. Do not pass this ordinance. Ask your department to explore the programs that are working in other cities that do not involve this increased taxation. Thank you very much.
Go right ahead, sir.
Hello, I'm Sean White. I may be only 16, but I'm quite knowledgeable. And I don't have a speech prepared because I just came here, but I've seen some of the things that they've been telling the kids. I mean, my mom, she's a very respectable breeder. We do... We go through... All our dogs are papered, but the people that's going to be affected by this are the good breeders. The people who are doing this in their backyards, the ones that they're complaining about, they don't have tax for their dogs. They're not going to be affected by this at all. They're still going to breed. They're still going to have their dogs loose in the streets. Nothing's really going to affect them. Since the respectable breeders of today are going to be... Sorry to waste your time, but respectable breeders of today are just going to be overtaxed or something that they can't control. It's not their fault. They're doing exactly... They're following the laws, abiding by them, doing nothing against them.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Patty Hoskins and I represent the Los Ovso Club of Southern California and also the Santa Ana Valley Kennel Club. Any individual that actively participates in the dog show industry is not your problem. We are responsible breeders that use prudent and selective breeding techniques. The stray dogs on the streets of Los Angeles are not caused by those breeders and dog fanciers that support the numerous kennel clubs within Los Angeles County. We are responsible citizens that will be damaged severely if this resolution is passed. I urge you not to pass this resolution. Please vote no.
Thank you. I'm going to allow one more speaker and then... Just one more speaker and then you can sit down and put your signs down. Your name, please.
Good morning, council members. Rather than read my prepared text, I would just ask you to please continue this. Thank you.
Okay. All right, the public hearing is closed and again, we will make all these cards part of the file. Okay. Who is the first speaker? Ms. Sikowski?
Mr. President, I would like to invite forward Mr. Dan Knapp and the animal regulation staff and commissioners who are here and ask for the department to present the ordinances as recommended by the commission.
Mark?
Mr. Knapp, could you go forward and tell the council what the ordinances are?
Thank you, council member. I was looking about for our commission president, Mr.
I was looking about for our commission president, Mr. Al Avila, who is here, and invite him to make the opening remarks. The ordinance before you, the amendments, speak to two current laws. The leash, actually, the Breeders' Permit Law, which is fifty-three fifteen point two, and dog licensing. Both of those are current misdemeanors, the six months in jail and/or one-thousand-dollar fine. The commission is recommending, the very summary is amendments to both of those that are designed to, first of all, encourage individuals to spay-neuter their dog or cat, reducing the penalty from a misdemeanor to a remedial action. First of all, individuals who currently have an unaltered dog are required to purchase a dog license for thirty dollars. The amendment would raise that cost to one-hundred dollars. Breeders' permit right now, those who breed for sale, are required to purchase a fifty-dollar permit. We only have two such permits on the books, and during the hearings, we've been shared that those who are currently breeding have not complied. It's raising the cost of the amendment to one-hundred dollars. The one-hundred dollars is a threshold fee. We sent to you recently a scale of affordable fees offered by Los Angeles veterinarians. The range is from thirty-five dollars for a neuter of a cat to one-hundred-and-ten dollars for a large dog. Individuals can, in the city of Los Angeles, access not only subsidized services for veterinary surgeries, but they can also access spay-neuter surgeries for under the cost of one-hundred dollars. So if you set the one-hundred-dollar fee, it's an incentive for individuals to pay for the one-time lower cost of spay-neuter and purchase the ten-dollar dog license annually and not have to pay a one-hundred-dollar Breeders' Permit. The understanding of the commission and what they're putting forward to you today is that the one-hundred dollars is designed to help individuals think seriously about what they're doing. We have individuals who are allowing their dogs to accidentally breed. One of the number-one reasons we hear when individuals bring in puppies to the shelter, seventy-four percent are euthanized, is that they kept their unaltered dog in the backyard, another dog feeling romantic climbed the fence, and had some puppies, and so they brought them in. The other type of breeder is the individual says, "I have a purebred. My cousin has a purebred. Let's breed them and sell them for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more in the newspaper." Those individuals are contributing to the public health crisis that we have on our streets. We would include under that category the individuals who are selling land sharks. Those are pit bull cross, dangerous animals for fifty dollars a pop on our streets. They sell them for fighting, they sell them because they're popular aggressive dogs to have, and then when the bitch is tired and broken down, they turn her loose in the local parks. Then we have those who are breeding, are responsible, I believe. I don't think one person who's come to any of our hearings is irresponsible. They are doing controlled breeding, genetically protecting their line, and placing their animals responsibly. But they will also admit that they cannot assure that those who they are placing the animals with will also assure that the offspring end up in good homes. We do see many purebreds coming into our shelters with AKC paperwork, and so we know that that's occurring. Consequently, the one-hundred-dollar fine is designed to cause those individuals who are putting their ads in the newspaper, those individuals who are allowing their dogs to be in the backyard and may have an accidental breeding, to really seriously consider their behavior. It also helps those who are responsibly breeding to say, "Yes, we are doing this seriously, and we'll purchase the one-hundred-dollar permit, and we'll continue this responsible behavior because responsible people follow the law." And we believe that since purebreds that are genetically protected by these responsible breeders are often sold for five-hundred dollars to fifteen-hundred dollars per puppy or per kitten. Now, we don't know if they're making a profit or not, that's not for us to judge, but it certainly is a cost of doing business. Now, the question has been raised, and one that the commission would like to address, has this ordinance been a failure or a success in other areas? I think the facts are clear. Those in the breeding community have presented the facts, the department has presented the facts. We've looked at King County, we've studied King County, we've talked with King County. King County has a population base closest to Los Angeles. They have succeeded because they have three elements. They have enforcement capacity. Council, you've given us the five officers to enforce this ordinance. They have spay-neuter subsidy services. You've given us those services through our discount coupons. They also have dog license canvassing, that's where they're going door-to-door, helping individuals purchase dog licenses. We also have dog license canvassing. We have those three elements in place. The remainder of the jurisdictions have failed, and failed miserably. Those are the facts. When we talked with those municipalities, and as they have sent documentation on, they have also shared that they failed because they had lack of enforcement, lack of dog license canvassing, lack of spay-neuter subsidies, and education. The department was very careful to consider those, and the commission has stated that if there weren't spay-neuter subsidy available for those on low income, and free services available for those on low income or limited income, if there was not the capacity to enforce these amendments, then we shouldn't be proceeding. So the one-hundred-dollar cost is a threshold to motivate most individuals that we possibly can. If an individual is not in compliance, our officers will give them a warning and say, "Here are the resources." We'll give them a booklet that shares where the affordable veterinarians are, and it will be in multiple languages, and it's being developed right now. We'll point them to the resources and give them forty-five days to either spay-neuter their dog or cat, or purchase the license and/or Breeders' Permit. After forty-five days, we will visit them again. If they haven't done that, then we'll ask them to do it, give them a fifteen-day warning. If, after fifteen days, they haven't done so, they're given a five-hundred-dollar fine, which is a civil penalty, and then we're recommending goes into the Spay-Neuter Trust Fund. We don't think we'll have many of those. We hope we don't. We hope that individuals comply. If then they do not pay the five-hundred-dollar fine, or they do not comply, then we do have the opportunity to file for a misdemeanor. So we're reducing it from a misdemeanor, so it's no longer punitive, to an incentive, to an amendment that actually says, "Here is some encouragement to do so." The commission has reviewed the draft that's before you. They have clarified one point in the draft. The draft talks about the requirement that all outdoor cats be spayed or neutered, and that only altered cats can go outdoors. In other words, if you have an unaltered cat, keep it indoors, which is entirely possible, and it is being promoted now by almost all animal groups as well as veterinarians. If an individual doesn't keep their cat indoors, we follow the same process. But in the draft, it talks to cats in public places. It should be all outdoor cats, and that's the only clarification, and the commission has accepted that draft as reflecting what they have passed on to you. Speaking very, very briefly to Mr. Burnson's possible amendments, the commission has recommended the department study these further and return to you in sixty days because they are very compatible for amendments to our leash law ordinance, rather than these particular two ordinances that we have before you. So with that brief summary, Mr. President, if there are questions.
Okay. We'll start with the council members, and Ms. Stokowski, the chair of the committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Knapp has indicated, and clearly he is here with members of his commission, the Animal Services Commission and department looked very long and hard at this. This was actually presented to them over a year ago by a motion on the city council, on the floor of the city council, when we were looking at our budget. And we looked at the time at that issue of concern, of what we saw, and what I think the Animal Services Commission has concurred in, that the city is facing a public health and safety crisis, and that crisis is the overpopulation of our pets that are running free, and are particularly running free in areas of the city, some much worse than others. Ms. Walters, who had testified at one of the earlier committees, talked about the very new South Central Shelter that's just opened, and it's already overcapacity, overcrowded. The animals that are kept there are in a condition where they are now a threat not only to each other, but to the animal control officers who are trying to work there. The last time we faced any kind of epidemic of this proportion was in nineteen fifty-four, when there was a rabies problem, and that's when we saw people walking the street with baseball bats to fend off the animals. That's what we are seeing today in certain of our districts. At the Public Safety Committee meeting, we had a testimony from a young group of schoolchildren who had come forward and talked about their difficulty just going to school, and what they are afraid of, and these animals that are running in packs and attacking them. We heard the, right now, the issue that we are suffering in the city, about seventy-six thousand dog bites to our residents a year. The vast majority of those are children. We need to do something. We are not proposing today new ordinances. We are proposing an amendment to two existing ordinances. Will this solve the problem in its entirety? Of course not. We, the council, recognize, and I think the Animal Services people have told us, it is going to take a combination of things. It's going to take legislation, and they feel that they have well-researched this, that it has been effective in other areas which have tried it, and this is not something that the city alone is facing. This is something that across the country, particularly in our significant urban areas, we are facing. It's going to take education, and we have seen the people come forward on both sides who concur with that, that education is paramount, and we need to do more than that and reach out to the animal communities to work with us in helping provide that education. And we need enforcement. And enforcement is something that this city council did approve last budget, where we asked and gave to the Animal Services more animal control officers, so they can do the enforcement, so they can have the vehicles ready, and go out and do the job that is the partner to what we are doing today. We've also heard that there is the community out there who is going to provide to the city vans to do the spaying and neutering, and have those vans in areas of the city where the economic disparity may make it a little harder to accomplish this, and they will give those, not only our program, the free coupons, but actually have the vans out there to do the spaying and neutering under the auspices of the city in terms of providing those officers to do that as well, and the medical assistance. Members of the council, this is something we asked our Animal Services Commission to look at. They looked at it, the department had this kind of hearing on a number of occasions where they had hundreds of people coming to their meeting throughout their consideration of this. They have recommended it unanimously, not only the current members of the commission, but I've spoken to earlier members of the commission who are no longer on that commission, who've also indicated that their concern and belief is that this is an important step that the city must take. It is true that there were issues, in fact, Mr. Burnson brought in a very comprehensive motion just before we were going to hear this in Public Safety Committee, and asked us to consider it. We did consider it. Mr. Knapp has indicated that much of the issue that Mr. Burnson has raised, and I think he will talk about it specifically, is compatible, can be adopted. They amend other ordinances, not the two that we have before us today, in terms of leash law and in terms of other kinds of requirements of pet owners. But as Mr. Knapp has said, they will take that motion back to commission, report back to the Public Safety Committee within sixty days, and those can be adopted with the recommendation of the commission, and be in sync by the time this ordinance goes into effect. There is an amnesty provision as part of this ordinance, so were it to be adopted, it would not go into effect immediately. So we can bring in other compatible amendments and regulations as the council members see fit. But members of the council, I think we need to applaud and thank our Animal Services Department and the commission for taking seriously the recommendation that the council asked them to look at. They've come back with one voice saying we should do this, and I'm going to move the communication from the Public Safety Chair, which recommends approval and adoption of these ordinances.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, please, please, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, it was approximately one year ago that the council took up this motion, seconded by several members, Mr. Fuhr, Ms. Walters, Ms. Goldberg, Mr. Hernandez, to encourage the commission to do what it has now done and brought this matter back to our attention. It has to be stated again, the overpopulation of dogs and cats in this city is a crisis of epic proportions, and an alarming rate of that is a threat to the public safety, to the public health of residents throughout this region, particularly to children. The figures are nothing less than ominous. Forty-four thousand stray dogs annually, seventy-four percent euthanasia rate in our shelters throughout the city, shelters operating at one-hundred-and-eighty percent capacity. And the most disturbing aspect of this is the risk to the children of our respective communities. They are the primary targets of these animals, far surpassing the issue of measles, mumps, and other common childhood diseases. The county health department says to us that dog bites are the number-one threat to the public safety and health of children. And it seems to me that it is important to recognize that we have been deliberative about this process. We've moved throughout the city, from City Hall to the harbor, to Cal State Northridge, to USC, to Shevied Hills Rec Center, to LA Mission College, to Boyle Heights Senior Center, various parts of the city throughout, to give people an opportunity to help us shape this ordinance. And that which is before us is precisely a matter of give and take, a result of extensive input. There is no quick fix, but our strategy is to work on as many fronts as possible in collaboration with those who are breeders, those who are animal lovers, those who are in responsible positions in the Animal Services Department. We've established a more realistic budget, we are stepping up community outreach and education, and we are attempting to get to the source of the problem. And I think today, it is incumbent upon all of us to recognize that we can simply wait no longer to deal with a matter that contributes in a substantial way to the deterioration of the quality of life of communities throughout the city of Los Angeles. That's why, that's why you see as many persons here today are in support of this ordinance. And I'm going to ask those adults and children alike simply to stand and register your support for this ordinance. These are people who live and are concerned about the quality of life in the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Now, Mr. President, I'll conclude.
Okay, please, he just asked you to stand, not to applaud him.
Mr. President, I'll take my seat at this point after saying the following. Children from eight schools were here today to say that they are appealing to the entirety of those of us who are in policymaking decisions to do the right thing and to contribute to the quality of life of their parents, their families, themselves as well, in a non-punitive and educative way. I suspect that we can do that, and I would urge a unanimous vote of this ordinance today.
Okay, please, please. Sergeant, would you ask those people not to applaud, because my colleagues have a tendency to play up to that. Mr. Fuhr?
Not I, Mr. President, not I. I rise to support the communication from our Public Safety Chair, Ms. Stokowski, and to commend Mr. Ridley Thomas for his leadership on this issue. Look, we have too many stray animals in our city, the consequence of which, and by the way, you know, for those of you who are here opposing this, here's the issue. We have stray animals who are unwanted, unprotected, and uncared-for in huge numbers roaming our streets. They are, as Mr. Lee Thomas and Ms. Stokowski have stated, and indeed, Mr. Knapp has stated, posing a very real threat to everyone in our city, in each of our council districts. All of us know from personal experience the tragedy that results from these stray animals. We've all talked to parents and kids and seniors who have been victimized by them, and it has been stated, we have to address this in a has been stated, we have to address this in a comprehensive way. This is a piece of that comprehensive approach, and it's mandatory. It's mandatory from a public safety standpoint when it comes to our residents who need to be able to roam the streets of the city in which they live safely, and it's mandatory from the standpoint of being humane. It is inhumane to allow this situation to continue to persist in our city without us taking constructive steps to alleviate it. This ordinance is reasonable. To not enact it, it seems to me, is to abdicate responsibility for both humanity and public safety in our city. And by the way, that's not just to the residents of our city, but to the animals who we ostensibly all care about. And so I want to rise and say, the fees make sense here. When counterbalanced against the costs associated with spaying or neutering a pet, the fees in this case make sense, and indeed, anything short of these fees would produce precisely the same result that we have at the moment. I'm convinced of that. Our commission is coming to grips with this in, I think, the most constructive way we've seen from a commission and a staff leadership for a long time. And I urge us unanimously to make a statement today that we're not ending the discussion with this action, we're beginning it, but we're beginning it on the most constructive note possible.
Sergeant, do your duty. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, this is an emotional issue for all of us because many of us are pet owners, and we care a great deal about our pets and about animals. We also care about the public and the impact that some of the animals and the way they are kept or not kept impacts all of us. I'm not positive that the ordinance that's before us today is going to answer all the questions. I am going to support it because I think it's a step in the right direction. It's not going to guarantee that dogs are not running in the streets. It's not going to guarantee that kids and people are not going to be attacked. It's merely going to put some impositions on people. My fear is that the people who obey the law are the ones who are going to be impacted by it. But that may be the case. Just a moment, I'm not finished yet, okay? Not finished yet. I introduced a motion, which will be coming back to this council, that probably won't totally solve the problem either. It'll merely give us a tool to solve the problem, and that is that it will increase the penalties for unleashed dogs, ownership of unleashed dogs. It will, on the third, it will increase the fines dramatically, and on the third offense, it will make it a misdemeanor, which is punishable by jail time and by a $1,000 fine. That may help some, but until the city is willing to put the resources into the field to make sure that these laws are enforced, we're not going to solve the problem. So this is merely one step, and I recognize the fact of those of you who are here in opposition. I know you feel it's an imposition that you're basically people who are going to obey the law and take care of your pets. Unfortunately, that's not the case with everybody. And I really am torn with this thing, but I am going to support it, but I think it is just a minor step. I think the major step is the next step on unleashed animals, and the final step is going to be up to the city, whether it's willing to put its mouth, or its mouth, its mouth where, its action where its mouth is. My mouth isn't where it should be. But we really have to, we really have to show that we're willing to give this department the resources to make sure that happens what we all want to see, is not overbeating of animals, not dogs running loose in the street and attacking people. We have to have responsible ownership, and that's, this is one step that will impact some people, unfortunately, because, you know, good people sometimes are impacted by laws that are created by a few bad apples. That's the way society is, and we have to learn to live with that. And I know it's a little bitter to some of you, but that's the way it has to be. But the final, the final action is going to be, look to this council and to the mayor's office and see what we do after these two ordinances are in place to make sure that we do what we should be doing to make sure it's enforced.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Ms. Galanter.
Just in case there's any question in anybody's mind, I am certainly going to support the ordinance for all of the reasons that Mr. Knapp outlined. I believe that it will be a help. I do want to say, however, that in the course of learning much more about this issue than I hoped I would have to, the thing that horrifies me the most is that the, and I appeal to those of you who are involved in the clubs and organizations that are involved in showing cats and dogs, is the requirement that you can't show a neutered animal. To me, this is absolutely nuts. Racehorses can run when they're neutered. The incentive, because you can't show a dog or a cat if it's been neutered, people who might otherwise be willing to... You know, I sat and listened to you, and I'm sorry I bothered, but I did. The, so if you don't mind... Stop. If you don't mind, I'm going to finish my statement, and you can holler when I'm done. I take that to be a refusal by the organized community of exhibitors to consider changing your own requirements so that owners of...
Would you hold your time in a court of honor?
I can take care of it. Sit down, it's my time.
Clear the audience, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden, this is my time. Just shut up.
I would ask, I ask you, if you're going to continue to disrupt the meeting, we're going to ask you to leave, and the sergeant will help you leave.
And then I'm going to vote twice. May I finish now?
Please.
Racehorses are allowed to compete even if they've been neutered. The, thank you, Mr. Burnson, I'm sure that will become an immortal quote. There is really no reason why a responsible owner who chooses to have a purebred dog should feel that it would be a bad idea to neuter the dog because they then wouldn't be able to show it at some time in the future. There are a lot of things we can do here, but we can't do them if government is the only entity taking action. We can't do them if government doesn't take action. So I am very supportive of this. I appreciate the patience of the Animal Services Commission and the department and all of the volunteers, and I would like to say thank you to all of the volunteers who help us try to deal with a problem that is way beyond what it ought to be. And I would urge your support for this ordinance. Those of you who are responsible breeders, and I assume that you are, can certainly comply with the law. What we have learned is that most of the responsible breeders are not complying with the law. Here's your chance, help us do it right.
Sergeant, I think you should remove a couple of people just to show that we're serious. Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, Mr. President, members of the council, maybe this is a time I could disclose one of your personal secrets, but you've got some little fluffy things you call dogs. What kind are they?
Poodles.
They're poodles, toy poodles. And I understand that they're very close to you, and I happen to have two dogs in my household. They're not toy poodles, they're labradors, and I also happen to have a cat who is very much a part of our family named Midnight. And Midnight and I have daily conversations when he's waking me up in the morning. And they happen to be licensed, and we get a bill every year, and we've got to go do that, and they're neutered and spayed. I also happen to have some cats who visit us, who aren't ours. They're no different than the raccoon who visits us and the possum who every now and then visits us. And I also happen to see a lot of dogs that are wandering around in the streets. In fact, sometimes I'm scared to go out there when they're running around in packs. And so I basically, in spirit, understand what we're trying to accomplish here, and I want to say that, I understand in spirit, I understand what we accomplish, what we're trying to accomplish here. I'm not so sure it's going to do what you say it's going to do. And the reason I say that is because of the reality of what we have before us today. What we know today is that whenever we offer a spay and neuter clinic in a low-income community, people are there, and they're taking their animals to be spayed and neutered. In fact, we don't offer enough of those clinics, and we don't have enough of those vouchers. Okay? We also know that about 24 percent of the pet population is currently licensed. And so the reality is that what we're talking about is a system for those people who participate in the system. And the question is, what do we do with the people who don't participate in the system? And that's why the enforcement is part of it. Now, I'm kind of sharing that because, again, our approach to it is to go after the few, knowing that the many are getting away with it. And see, we know that part of the solution is to offer the spay and neuter clinics at a cost that is affordable in a community that can pay for it, and to continue to do that in the much greater proportions than we've done today. We know that that's part of the solution, and we know that that works. And the item 18, we're trying to adjust what we got going now, but I'm not sure we're adding more to it. And I just wanted to make that statement because that's what really will help us with our situation, how it is that we deal with this ordinance and how it provides more revenue for us to provide those kinds of clinics is part of my question to you, Mr. Knapp. If we're not doing that, let's put that on the table, because what you're really talking about is, I will spay and neuter my animals, and it's not because it's going to cost me $100 or it's because it's going to cost me $10 because I think it's the right thing to do with them. I don't want them to have a problem, and that creates a problem for me. And I think that you have a lot of citizens who will continue to do that because they've been doing it already. The question is, how do you reach the 76 percent who aren't doing that now, and how you believe that this is actually going to get that done?
Well, we have six more council members who are going to answer that question.
Right, and I just asked those two questions. I asked two questions, one was the spay and neuter clinics, and then the second.
All right, go ahead. Do you want to answer them?
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. I think there's a multiple answer to that. What we are implementing is much like the first day that the seatball, seatbelt law went into effect. It raises the public consciousness that now there is a societal value, the value in Los Angeles is that owners must spay, neuter their pets. And it's a privilege to breed. It's no longer a right, it's a privilege. As we continue to raise that standard, working with the humane groups, then we'll start to see a response. Now, the humane groups have come forward with a phenomenal amount of resources, and what they've shared, they've been asked this question, why have we come forward at this point? Why haven't we come forward previously? These are the individuals that rescue the dogs and cats. These are the ones that feel the euthanasia and see the euthanasia. They have said for the first time in a long, long time, we have something that we can use as a positive incentive that will cause individuals to ask a question, and when they ask that question, we'll be there with the resources. Whereas before, the resources have been there, but have we had a targeted audience to reach with an incentive, with legislation that says, here is something that you need to do? For me, it's very important to reach those who cannot afford spay, neuter. I've been working to form a foundation, Coalition for Pets in Public Safety. They have formed, they've offered to the city, they've raised funds, offered to the city two mobile spay, neuter clinics, should the city fund operations, to do free spay, neuter in the areas of our city that are limited by income. These are traveling. These go to individuals who have mobility problems and offer those particular services. So your point is very well taken. We have to approach all of our citizens in a demographic way, in a market niche way. They all have different needs, they all need different approaches. Education will motivate those who are borderline. Free services that are mobile will go to your front door and provide those particular services. The humane community will be motivating others. Enforcement will occur only at the point that an individual has consciously made the decision that they're not going to do it, when we've given all opportunities. It'll take a while, but as, and you're right, it's only a small part of the solution. You have to add spay, neuter assistance, education, but it is the beginning of turning off the faucet that's flooding the floor rather than just mopping it up.
Okay. Mr. Pacheco is next.
Madam President, colleagues, I introduce an amendment to the ordinance or the motion, it's 13A, and it basically asks for a sunset of the ordinance. And let me explain where I'm coming from on the decision to make this amendment. First of all, I want to be supportive of the proposal, and I want to solve this problem in the most efficient, humane way. My personal problems with the stray animals that I encountered as a kid and still encounter as an adult in Boyle Heights are pretty great in terms of the amount of packs that we get in the mornings, especially early in the mornings. And I'm not sure if that's owners letting their dogs loose in the morning to just roam and then come back, but I'm not so sure if, I'm really concerned about the dollar amounts and what effect it will have in the poor communities. But I have been assured by the private industry and the different nonprofits and CBOs that they're going to help us with that concern. So I do have, there are individuals stepping forward to address my concerns. But I think that as an elected and someone who's representing my district and trying to make a citywide decision here, I need to have a safety valve. I need to have something that I can look to and say, if this doesn't work, or if these people are wrong and it turns out to be a problem, or create more problems and solve, I really want to feel comfortable supporting this wholeheartedly, and my comfort level will only be met if I have the sunset included as part of the ordinance. If you look at the motion, it's June 30th, 2003. We put it far out enough to address the concern that someone raised that people will wait out the time period. I think that concern is addressed through the date of putting out June 30th, 2003, because some have suggested an earlier date may be problematic. But that's the way I will support the ordinance. I think we're going in the right direction. I am not, I've spoken, I've told people this repeatedly, I am not an animal person myself. I generally have been, had negative experience with these stray animals and really feel that this is probably the best we can do under the circumstances. So with the amendment, I will support it. Without the amendment, I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wax.
It's easy, I think it's easy to support this in the sense that, you know, we have a crisis, and this will help, but I think we're really fooling ourselves if we think that this is really going to solve the problem in this city on its own. The fact is, as you well know, Madam Chair, you've been in the forefront of these issues. This city has a crisis, and it's our doing, because this city has never taken seriously, seriously enough to give the resources that we need to deal with the problem. We have not given the resources for the programs, we have not given the resources for the enforcement of the laws, we have relied on the hearts and souls of many of the people who are here today to do the job for us. And while I acknowledge that and am thankful for that, that isn't the way a city should respond to an issue like this. The fact of the matter is, we don't take this seriously. We do not elevate this in our sense of values and priorities as a high enough issue. It is inexcusable that 75 to 80 percent of the people could violate any law in this city and go and get away with violating the law in this city, sitting on its you-know-what, not going after them. We could make, you know, you can, five minutes, you could make a contract with either the DWP or the post office or somebody, give them $5 for an address, they fill out on a little card to tell you where there's an animal, and you go out and see. It is not right for 78 percent of the people in this city not to have licenses for their animals when it is the law that they do so and that that law is for the public good. And it is equally not right that we don't do a damn thing about it. You just let it go and hope that somehow by these other cosmetic, not cosmetic, but by these other supplemental programs, you're going to get to the fundamental part of the problem. If they haven't licensed it for $30, they're probably not going to license it for $100 because, but that, but the answer isn't not to do. The answer is to go out and make sure that they're licensed, and then to make sure that the licensed animals and the owners are given, the trustees of those animals are given the education that they need and the incentives they did and the assistance they do so that they become responsible guardians of those animals. And unless and until we do that, we're going to be back here, because, Mr. Knapp, this is not the first time. I introduced the first law in this city almost 30 years ago to provide a differential in the fees. Then it must have been three and eight or something like that, or four and 10, you know, and we did it then. And we have had humane groups giving of themselves endlessly over the years for spay and neutering assistance, for education, for outreach, and all of that. And we are, where are we today? Despite all of that, we're worse off than when we started. We have more animals running loose, we have more people being attacked, we have more people, and we're not going to solve this by what we have here today. Raising a tax is not the sole answer to a problem. But doing nothing is clearly not the answer to solving a problem. And what I'm saying to you is... And what I'm saying to you is, until we and our budget give you the resources you need, till you get serious about enforcing and enforcing the laws that we have, think for a moment, if you made a deal with the DWP, you're going to put nice things in the things that they send out for education. Think if they went around, every time that they go around to look at someone's property, guy just fills out a little card and says, there's an animal here. And you went out, and you went out to see if that animal, to that address, if that animal has a license, if that animal has... If you want to enforce it, you can. And the money you'll get from enforcing the law will be, will give you far more resources than you can for increasing the fee on a relatively few people. But no one has the guts to go out and do that. And until you do it, we're going to be right back here, two years from now. I mean, I've been back here each time, as you have, Madam Chair. And the reality of this is, don't fool yourself thinking you're solving all the problems by this. And finally, once and for all, maybe make a commitment to really do what has to be done to solve it.
Thank you. Mr. Savornich is next.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. Members of the council, I'm glad Mr. Wax liked the idea about the DWP. One of the things that...
The post office people will actually know where every dog in town is.
Absolutely. One of the things to which I also find incredulous is that, once every other month, I get a notice from the DWP that says, leave gate unlocked, please chain dog. The DWP knows that I have a dog, and the only reason why Animal Services know that I have a dog, because I went and bought a license and had my dog spayed. But if I chose not to do that, you would never know. And so one of the things to which gives me concern also is, I remember a year ago when we were deliberating the budget in regards to the voucher program, and all of the concerns that we had on how vouchers were being given out in the city. And what gives me some concern today, and I agree with Mr. Ridley Thomas and others of my colleagues, that are very concerned in regards to the amount of dog bites that we're seeing in this city, the amount of children there being harmed by loose animals. But what gives me even greater concern is that after a year of deliberation, and after a year of working on this, basically what I see is that the solution is raising a fee. And I think it's more complicated than that. And one of the concerns that I have is that while I understand where you're trying to go because of the fee, I think it's punitive. And it's punitive, in my opinion, because I think that we have not put the resources, as Mr. Wax has just said, in regards to making a concerted effort by this city, over the course of many years, to put more resources into the Department of Animal Services. I know it's a department that both the new commission and the new general manager that inherited, that was in dismal shape. And it was because of volunteers and our humane society and folks in our communities is why our shelters were in as good a shape they were in. And so one of the concerns that I have today is that, yes, I want to see less stray animals on the street. Yes, I want to see the dog bites in this city, especially among children, go to zero. But I don't think raising a fee is actually going to get us there. And one of the concerns that I also have, and I mentioned a Mr. Ridley Thomas on the drive-in this morning, I didn't take the Harbor Freeway into work this morning. I drove up Broadway. And from Imperial to City Hall, I counted 15 stray dogs, just on Broadway. And one of the concerns that I have is that, over the course of my seven-year tenure on this city council, I have constantly asked for more resources in regards to having our officers on the street, doing the roundups, doing the things that we in the district see that need to be happening, and they haven't. And so I have a real hard problem today, as a pet owner and as a taxpayer of the city, saying that the way that we're going to solve this problem is to raise the fee, rather than this city council and the mayor's office making a conscious decision in the budget that we are about to discuss within the next 60 days, is giving you the resources to do your job.
Mr. Holden.
If I told one of my colleagues to shut up, the first thing they'd do is go file a complaint against me.
No, no, all I did was call out you.
No, 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 it's my time there. It's my time.
There you go. You're right, now it is your time.
That's right, you got to sit quiet and listen. I'm not going to tell you to shut up, but just sit quiet and listen.
Yes, sir.
If you can give it, you can take it. All right.
Don't worry, I can take it.
Now, you see there? Another you can do, hush her up. She got the mic. Mr. Knapp, I heard what Mr. Savornich said. But don't you think it'd be more effective if we were to say it's going to be, we'd get the attention really well if you say it's going to be $200 or $500 if you don't spay and neuter? Don't you think we'd get more, better results? Somebody say yes and no.
No.
I didn't ask you. Mr. Knapp, that's the idea, that's the way we're going. Wouldn't you say that?
I think if you place the fee too high, Councilmember, it will be a demotivator.
All right.
The $100 fee was chosen as a threshold simply because you can get the majority of surgeries under that cost.
His point is, here's his story on that. It would be a demotivator. Who's to say that $100 is not a demotivator if you've got three dogs? And that's the point I'm trying to make here. The point I'm trying to make is that, if you have dogs in the 8th, 9th, and 10th and elsewhere, stray dogs, and they're not stray dogs necessarily, people in that neighborhood sometimes just let their dogs out to walk, and they come home. Okay? That's number one. Number two is that, if you fine them $500 because they didn't pay $100 to get the dog spayed or neutered, which they can't afford to even buy food sometime, you hear me out now. Otherwise, I'm going to ask the president to remove you. So the fact of the matter is that, there's got to be some kind of a consideration here. Personally, I am not going to vote for the $500 fine, because the people who are going to have to pay it can't afford to eat, to pay gasoline, to pay automobile insurance, or whatever the case may be. Hey, you're out of here. I'm going to vote the other way if you keep applauding. They just can't afford to do it. Now, I would say that it's rather excessive. I understand the point you're trying to make, and I would be supportive of something mid-range. But I cannot go for $100, number one. Even though I think it's more than what you need as an incentive to accomplish what you want. I can support something in the middle. Okay? And I'll come back and speak on that, because I have 18 seconds. Ruth interrupted me. And the other thing I would say is that, well, I'll save it for next time around. She'll tell me my time is over, even though I've got six seconds.
Ms. Goldberg.
I think we have an interesting way of talking ourselves in and out of things. We say, well, it would never solve all the problems, and that's the, but you never said it was going to solve all the problems. So I don't know why we're arguing against you as if you said it was going to solve all the problems, when that was never your position. But that's, you know, how rhetoric goes sometimes. I do think it's important to make a few statements. One is, we've got to start somewhere. And this is a good place to start. Secondly, this department, as all of us who've been here a short time, and those of you who've been here longer know, has been cut and cut and cut and cut and cut. And we should accept a tremendous amount of the responsibility for the problem that's out there. Because at the moment that it happened, it never seemed like a big crisis. And now that it's happened, first incrementally for a few years, and now it's kind of almost was a semi-annual indoor sport to see how much you could get away with cutting animal reg, we're responsible in part for the situation that we're in. And the only way that's going to change is if we continue to ask the mayor to change his attitude toward this department and the budget, and if that doesn't happen, if we have the courage to change it ourselves. Because frankly, this is not, you know, San Bernardino County. This is not San Diego County. This is the second-largest city in the entire country. And we have a huge problem, and we need a huge group of people to do exactly what several of you have said, to make sure that the animals are licensed, to make sure that we have, in the appropriate neighborhoods, the spay and neuter clinics that are free. And we're not doing those things. So I'm going to support this, but I'm also going to remind myself and each and every one of my colleagues, when the budget comes, that if this is all we do, then all of our own predictions that this isn't going to solve the problem will become self-fulfilling prophecies. We have to take this step today, but we have got to do a lot more than that. I, as many of you know, I've just completed a campaign. I want to tell you what the dog problem is out there. I'm telling you, I carried dog bones with me everywhere I went. And I was chased through many parts of this city's streets by well-groomed dogs, as well as by strays. These were not just dogs of people who had released them and let them go, but by dogs that people let go, who owned them, that had collars, and that had licenses. We have a huge education problem. We have a huge stray and unowned dog problem. And let me tell you, those feral cats are another story altogether out there. So I had a very close encounter, firsthand opportunity, to see what this city, and those of us who are responsible for it, are not taking care of business. And I have dogs, we've had cats and dogs, we've had every kind of pet you can think of. My son is absolutely in love with every animal in the animal kingdom, and I'm very proud of that. But there's no excuse not to have them spayed and neutered, and there's no excuse to not have them on a leash, and there's no excuse not to take care of them appropriately. And we need to make sure that those people who live in neighborhoods where they can't afford it have the opportunity to get this done for free or for little cost, and that's our responsibility. And then all of our concerns will be addressed, and this program will be a little piece of it.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we've had a rather extensive discussion to disclose the pros and cons of the matter. But I think it needs to be restated, that the intention is essentially to begin to address the root of the problem. We make no claims that it is exhaustive, we make no claims that it is the panacea, but it is to suggest that we have to begin to address this issue in an assertive and even aggressive way. But having said that, it should be noted that the emphasis is on education, the emphasis is on compliance, the emphasis is not on being punitive. It is essentially to try to say to those in the community far and wide that the current state of affairs, the status quo, is simply not acceptable. It's a threat to both public safety and to public health. Now, this has been an ordinance that has been debated, it has been revised based on input from both sides of the discussion. I think, Mr. and Madam President, members of the council, it is time for us to move forward, to raise the standard, to raise the bar, essentially to set a new model in place for the city of Los Angeles and other municipalities that are sure to follow. I urge the members of the council then to adopt this ordinance, and I would say this with the following in mind. An amendment to sunset this ordinance does not help us send the message in the most clear way possible. And so I would urge that we move with the commission, which is prepared to revisit this matter in 18 months, not in three years. And on that basis, make what necessary revisions might be required, and to review it on an annual basis thereafter. With that, it would seem to me that the ordinance, as it is before us, is fully acceptable, and I am simply here to urge a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski, you're next. We also have Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Holden who want to be heard again. Do you want to wait and close? Okay. Mr. Pacheco, you're up next.
Madam President and colleagues, I was going to just say two things. I think, no matter where you end up on this issue, I think we need to commend all the individuals who have participated in the dialogue on both sides of the issue. I think they inundated, at least my email box, with information. I also wanted to just, I was brought, it was brought to my attention that, in my amendment, we should include that the department have a comprehensive report prepared no later than January 1st, 2003, for us to make a decision on June 30th, 2003. However, if it's accurate that in 18 months, we're going to have a report, we'll use that report. So I, if that's, if that makes sense to Mr. Knapp. Okay, so we'll leave it at as-is with 18 months. Okay. Well, I still urge support of the amendment at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Ms. President and members, I do notice that there are more stray dogs in and around the inner city. But they're pure bred, some of them. Which means that the breeder, who don't live in the 8th, 9th, and 10th of the inner city, go out and they breed them, and they can't sell them, so they dump them very often in the inner city. If you don't believe it, I just talked to a lady the other day who got what she thought was a purebred little dog, and looked like a purebred, but it was a stray dog in the inner city. How did it happen? Because they breed them over there, and they dump them over here, very often. And then, of course, on the other hand, as I said earlier, that the people who have legitimate dogs that they own in their community, and they go out, and they do, they don't always walk them right. So you need an education program. Ms. Goldberg said that. If you really were going to embark on implementing a stringent, thorough, well-thought-out education program, to have the people in the inner city understand what the crisis is all about, and then have them take advantage of the free coupon or voucher system, then that's one thing. We're not putting that much emphasis in this ordinance on that kind of a program, and that's what's needed. Also, what's needed, I think, is to make sure that those who do breed so-called pure animals share their financial responsibility. They may be required by law to chip each one of them before they let them go, let them out or sell them. And that's a fee. Let them do that, be required. The so-called papers that they have, they're not papers. Where's the city seal? Require that in order to have that kind of a business transaction within the city, that says, that's certified that it's a purebred animal, then you've got to have the city seal on there. You want to see some motions? You want to see some cleaning up of this? It will be done, step by step. I don't think this is going to be any more effective than the gun ordinance that we put in. We take some guns from the criminals, maybe a few, but the guy who's going to use the gun the right way, he's going to pay more. Same thing with the animal. Now, I would say to you that we need to have some corrective action, and this is going to go some way to do that. I would also say that the $75 is punitive, I mean, it's $50, $100, and it should be reduced. If you're in favor of reducing it, fine, maybe you can pull me into your camp. If you're not, I'm going to stay lost. Mr. Knapp, and I want to make a motion that we reduce this amount to maybe $50 or $75 for those who were... And how you feel about that, Mr. Knapp? Do I get a second? All right, then I, then I got no vote? Go pass it without me.
Ms. Misakowski to close.
Thank you. I wanted to speak on a couple of things. One, I hope a number of the comments that were made today, I think particularly by Mr. Wax and Ms. Goldberg, are almost replayed in about six weeks or two months when we do our budget, because that's the time when those statements need to be replayed. Last year, for the first time, we did augment the Animal Services budget, and we did augment those things that are necessary, and people indicated. Standing alone, this ordinance wouldn't do anything. But standing with enforcement, standing with teeth, standing with some of the items that Mr. Bernson brought in in a separate motion, dealing with leash law, dealing with other kinds of issues addressing this, it's going to start to get somewhere. We are now looking at, we are also, members of the council, we adopted item 18 today, which we didn't even call special, which is asking the Animal Services Department to augment free spaying and neutering as part of their budget. That already is part of it. That, again, is another tool that we need to enhance. I do rise to speak against, in opposition to item 13A, which is the sunset clause. I think the department has already indicated they will step up, they will do an analysis in 18 months, and that will be brought back to us. We don't need to sunset the ordinance. And we should ask the Animal Services at that time, when they do their report, to keep what they have today. What are their predictions as to what this is going to do? What are the euthanasia figures? What are the stray dog figures today and their expectation of what this is going to do, along with everything else? And they should be able to meet those expectations. If not, then we might have serious concerns. But I think that we ought to put this ordinance in effect. I think the debate has been very, very good around... I think the debate has been very, very good around the council, bringing in a lot of different perspectives, recognizing that this is not the sole answer, but it is finally time that I think the council is addressing this in a comprehensive way with our Animal Services Department, and we need a lot more to do and have to really consider that very seriously this next upcoming budget. So I ask for an "aye" vote on the ordinances and a "no" vote on the amendment.
Thank you. All right, what's before us first is the Amendment 13A. That's the sunset, that would have the ordinance sunset on June 30 of 2003 with a report back from the department 18 months from now in order for the council, the commission and the council to find out how things are going. That's part of, as I understand it, that's part of Mr. Pacheco's revised 13A. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, so Item 13A, the amendment, is to include the sunset clause as well as a report. Okay? And the original proposal does not have the sunset clause. So open the roll on the amendment on 13A.
Urging no vote.
13A is the sunset clause that says that the ordinance would end on June 30 of 2003 unless reenacted. Okay, now, wait a minute. I didn't get a chance to vote because I was busy trying to explain it. Can you redo the roll? Open the roll on, can you clear the roll and then open it again?
Are you clearing the roll?
It's not clear yet because my vote is still recorded.
Urging no vote.
Okay, now, we're voting on 13A. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, seven noes.
All right, so that was not approved, and the original ordinance, as recommended by the commission, is before us. Open the roll on the ordinance, close the roll.
Urging aye vote.
Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, three noes.
That is approved, but it's only first reading. It goes over one week, and we'll be back for a second reading a week from today.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, next item, Madam Clerk. Item 14, called special by Councilmember Misakowski. Item 14, Ms. Misakowski, hit the little speaker button, please. Thank you. This one does not pertain to dogs. Go ahead. Wait, hold on, Cindy, wait a second. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have, including ladies and gentlemen of the council and everybody else, we do have a number of items still before us. So if I could ask those of you who are on your way out to exit quietly and expeditiously, we'd appreciate it because we're going on here. Item 14, Ms. Misakowski.
Yes. Madam President, as you indicated, this is a, an ordinance.
We, excuse me, we do also have a couple of people who want to be heard on this one. Do you want to introduce it, or you want to have the hearing first?
Let me introduce it, but I'm also, this is the ordinance dealing with prohibiting urinating and defecating in public, but I'm going to ask that this matter be continued for 45 days so that the companion piece, which is the issue of a report from the Bureau of Engineering and the Department of Public Works as to what they are doing in terms of making toilet facilities available. I know Councilmember Rita Walters is working on this with a group of people, and I would like to have that report back from the Bureau of Engineering on this matter, a corollary matter, within 45 days and so, to hold the ordinance. And I believe that that is concurrent with some of the comments that we're going to hear from the public speakers, but let's go ahead and have them comment.
Well, let me ask, as soon as we, Sergeant, could you help clear, Ron, could you clear a space near the center here so we can hear from? I have two speakers on Item 14, and I will simply ask you if you want to be heard today or if you would rather wait until this comes back. May 12 is 45 days from now, so we intend to be hearing this on May 12. I have Mr. Richard Smith and Ms. Angela McGowan from Central City Association. Do you want to be heard now or you want to wait till May 12? May 12. And you? Okay. So that, Item 14 is continued until May 12. Yes, I'm sure they will. Now, when it comes up on May 12, it's, it's open season.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item. Item 16, called special by Councilmember Fier. Okay, Item 16. Oh, all right, Mr. Fier needs to excuse himself on this one, so. Yeah, all right, delete Mr. Fier for the moment, and open the roll on Item 16, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Okay, next item.
Item number 17.
17, we have speakers on that as well. Who called it special?
Councilmember Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg, do you want to hear from the public first, or did you, Item 17 we're on here? All right, we, one, two, three, we have four speakers. This is the item regarding Mulholland Scenic Corridor. We'll hear first from Bob Locker, to be followed by Barry Reed, Joan Lux, and Susan Nelson. Mr. Locker, are you here? There you are. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm representing Pacific Palisades Residents Association and the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations. And we support the Mulholland Scenic Corridor going into the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission zone, and I have some, and they're handing them out now, some letters from other organizations, homeowners of Encino, Friends of Catalero County, Canyon, excuse me, Studio City Residents Association, Candor from the Mount Washington area, Echo Park Renters and Homeowners Association, and from Sue Nelson, area community planner. And I would urge you to support Cindy Misakowski's motion to include that into the West Los Angeles APC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed.
Madam President, members of council, I'm Barry Reed, Executive Director of Mulholland Tomorrow. First, I want to express my appreciation to the Plum Committee for bringing you not one but two recommendations for keeping the Mulholland Scenic Corridor intact and unified under the Area Planning Commission proposal. From the outset, we were concerned about the planning department's proposal to divide the corridor. We think that the cumulative effect of division over the years would have a very adverse effect on the corridor. We have two recommendations before us, one to place the corridor in the South Valley Area Planning Commission, one to place it in West LA. We are in support of Councilwoman Misakowski's minority report to place it in West Los Angeles. We have three primary reasons, if I can state them quickly. One is that we believe that the Mulholland Corridor is basically the backbone of the hillside neighborhood of the Santa Monica Mountains, and we believe that putting it in the West LA Area Planning Commission will keep the corridor and the hillside neighborhoods intact as one planning area. Second, as Mr. Locker just stated, there is significant public support, not only in the Mulholland Corridor, but specifically in the north parts of the corridor, those areas that would be in the South Valley Area Planning Commission, and those areas that would, to the extent anyone's inconvenienced, would be inconvenienced by having to come over the hill to the West LA. Support for placing this entire corridor into the West LA APC. So we believe that that's a pretty telling argument for placing it in West LA. The third has to do with the caseload. The planning department has pointed out that somehow a majority, or two-thirds or so of the cases arising under the specific plan arise in the, what would be the South Valley area. But if you look at the cases that would actually go to the Area Planning Commission, which are just basically appeals, you're only talking about probably in a year, 10 to 12 at most in total, probably six or eight that would have to go one way or the other. So for these three reasons, we would urge you to support the minority report and to place the Mulholland Corridor in the West LA Planning Commission. Thank you.
Ms. Lux.
Thank you very much. Joan Lux and I am speaking on behalf as an individual, not for Hillside Federation, so I want to make sure that that is clear. This issue is, for myself, kind of a mixed bag, because on one level, I certainly support that there be the, a review of the hillside issues before a single Area Planning Commission, but we can't have that unless it's mixed with another Area Planning Commission. Because the plan crosses many community plans and, of course, is a citywide thing, you know, my own personal opinion is I have some concerns about having Coingapass area being, having decisions made in either the South Valley or the West Side. But I'm not adamantly opposed to however this turns out, although technically we do support the West Side because we think that more decisions will come out favorably. But it's very difficult to have decisions made so far away, and there is definitely concern, in my opinion, for, and good cause to have decisions made within your own Area Planning Commission jurisdiction. And that's why I have checked off comments only, but I want to go on the record of, you know, you know, indicating my reservations about this and also asking, again, like the South Robertson Group has been asked to be reconfigured in their area planning, in their area, Coingapass has also been asking to be out of the Studio City Sherman Oaks Community Plan and into the Hollywood Community, which is where we believe we belong. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Susan Nelson.
I'm Sue Nelson, and I'm speaking here in behalf of the public park, the Topanga State Park, that is largely within the Palisades Brentwood Community Plan, historically and otherwise. And I'm supporting having the APC on the West Side. I think it's a, the consensus, it's a difficult to develop consensus around these APCs because they're pretty arbitrary anyway. But the Mulholland Scenic specific plan also goes to something called the Mulholland DRB, Design Review Board, and that needs to be factored in, and that DRB needs to meet up at Mulholland. I'm particularly concerned at the Dirt Mulholland part that is, should be Park Road, should have a kiosk at either end. That is not, I'm not talking about neighborhoods or preservation of areas. I'm talking about the, the public investment on the view sites, on Franklin Canyon, on Will Acres, and on the big public expense of creating that park where 200,000 homes would have once cut the mountain down. We need to save that area. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. I see Mr. Sutton getting ready to make a presentation. I have four council members who want to speak, and.
Would you say to answer questions?
Yeah, okay. Mr. Sutton is prepared to answer questions, which somebody is certain to have. Mr. Burnson is first.
Yes, I think before, I'd like to have Mr. Sutton make a presentation before I speak, if I might, okay? And then I'll make my comments. Would you please give us a report?
The Planning Commission approved the Mulholland Scenic Parkway Plan to be in the three areas that are involved with Mulholland. The South Valley, which has about 50-some-odd percent of the area, the West Side.
Bob, you need to pick up the mic.
The West Side and the central area. It comes out to be roughly 35% in the west, 11% in the central, and 54% on the south In terms of planning activities, the plans would stay where they are. We would do the south side of the valley. We would plan with the rest of the south side of the valley. When we did the west side of town, we would do the Mulholland. Anything we do in this part of town, there's no way we can look at one side of the hill without looking at the other side of the hill. And any kind of planning activity would go to the City Planning Commission because appeals, I'm sorry, amendments to the specific plan all go to the City Planning Commission under the new charter. So that would remain. It's mainly, we're talking about appeals from DRB activities. The, what we have right now is 68% of the cases going to the, on the south side of the valley. Of the appeals we've had this year, we've had four appeals. All four were on the south side. I'm sorry, the South Valley. Staff is in the South Valley. We are, at this point in time, you know, recommending that where the commission said, which is long Mulholland, would be to split. If it has to go one side or the other, we would, we would recommend the South Valley.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Burnson, you ready?
Yes, I think Mr. Sutton has put it very clearly. The majority of the activity, including the staff and everything else, are in the South Valley. The committee did listen very carefully to the concerns of the Mulholland people who were concerned about keeping it together, and we agreed to that, and we decided to adhere to their wish. But now they want to move it to the West Los Angeles, which doesn't represent the majority of the cases. I would urge, and it was the majority report of the committee, that it be put into the South Valley portion, but it does keep Mulholland together. It keeps all of the provisions that are in the specific plan. It keeps all the provisions of Dirt Mulholland. It keeps all the provisions of the DRB. The only thing is, the only question is, where is it going to be? And being as the activity, the staff, and the majority of the cases fall into the South Valley portion, that was the reason for the majority report. So I would urge, and I vote, and I would move the majority report of the planning committee.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I am fortunately, I'm sorry that we have to choice only between these two because I supported the notion of an overlay zone for all folks in, anywhere in the city that were involved with slope density issues, because it takes a certain expertise to deal with those issues, and it would be nice to have them dealt with uniformly throughout the city, but I lost that battle. I just raised that because I still think that's the most appropriate. Having said that, I think that the, far and away, the largest number of decisions about open space are going to be in the part that is south of Mulholland and therefore in the west side. And so I'm going to support the minority report in this particular case because I think that it doesn't matter where the bulk of the cases are. I think some of the issues which deal with the, how we're going to preserve the Santa Monica Mountains as a open area for all of the city's residents, whether they live near the area or not, are going to be issues that are going to come into the west side area and not the south, not north of Mulholland in the South Valley. I still think that after this is up and running, that the planning department ought to seriously take a look at recommending an overlay zone and coming back with that, but I don't think we can discuss that today. It's not before us, and I, I just want to keep the idea alive because I think it's the most appropriate, and it should include not just this corridor, but all similarly situated slope density areas that are affected by slope density legislation. So I'm going to support, for those reasons, the minority report and hope that eventually we'll get to where I think we need to be, which is an entirely different solution.
Why don't you then move the minority report?
I'll move the minority.
So that we have something on the table here. All right, you're welcome. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. I was going to get up to move the minority report.
Fine, then you can move it.
But I'm happy to second Ms. Goldberg's motion. Members of council, as you've heard, both from the speakers who spoke today and the presentation, this is not an absolutely clear-cut case. It really is a choice, and it's a choice as we are going and embarking on creating the new Area Planning Commissions. The reason I was persuaded to support the West LA Planning Commission is, one, taking cue from the citizens who have most been active in, for a long period of time, in the general area, and that includes Mulholland Tomorrow, a specific group preserved and focused on the Mulholland specific plan, the Mulholland Design Review Board, our own inherent city-created agency to review and consider first those appeals in the Mulholland specific plan area, and the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations, which does have associations on both the north side of the Santa Monica Mountains through various communities and member associations on the south side. Those three citizen entities said put it in the West LA Area Planning Commission. It's not without dispute and other ideas, and I think there are legitimate ideas. I think generally what you're hearing from, from your committee is that putting it in one commission makes sense. What you have is the recommendation on the part of Mr. Burnson and Mr. Hernandez to go with the South Valley, persuaded by the staff, and you have my minority recommendation to go, persuaded by the majority of the entities who govern this as citizen communities, to go with the West LA area. So that, those are the choices before us, all to be reviewed within two years when the City Planning Department comes back with how the Area Planning Commissions have worked and where or if there needs to be further adjustments in that process.
Mr. Hernandez.
You know, members of the council, this is not an area I represent, and I tend to sit on the Plum Committee and listen to a lot of the appeals that come before us, and I was trying to ask some specific questions, so it's not, I'm not married to one side or another, except I'm part of the majority report, and I want to share with you why I'm part of the majority report. One, if the Mulholland Scenic Corridor. One, if the Mulholland Scenic Corridor should be part of the west Planning Council, maybe we should consider changing it from the Area Planning Committee. And when I say that, it's, its boundaries should all be included in the planning area that we're talking about. Part of the problem is, right now, we have the, the Mulholland Drive and the whole Scenic Corridor within three planning areas. And so the question was, what planning area does it apply to? When I asked the question about where the caseload comes from, and we have a letter from Karen Howe saying that sixty-eight percent was coming out of the south valley and seventeen percent was coming out of the west valley, or west Los Angeles, fourteen percent was coming out of the central. So clearly, the majority of the caseload is coming out of the south valley APC. And the real, the real problem from my perspective is, is trying to, us to stay in conjunction and coordinate it with the community plans. And so what we're really saying here, in this case, Mulholland Drive, if we were to put it in the west valley pack, what we're saying is it should be part of the west valley community plan, planning area. It shouldn't be part of the south valley community planning area. Now, if we're going to keep it in the south valley community planning area, I think the reality is, if it's part of those community plans, it should belong in that area planning committee. And that's why I had mixed feelings, because we're saying one thing in regards to community plans and trying to keep them consistent and honor their boundaries, and we're saying something else when it comes to the, to the specific plan regarding the corridor. So the majority of the caseload, at least over the last six months, came out of the south valley area, and the appeals all came out of the south valley area, which is why I thought it would go appropriately in the south valley area. That's why I concurred with Mr. Burnson. I really think for it to be part of the west valley area, we should consider moving it, changing its community plan and adjusting those boundaries. And then I think it would all fall hand in hand with everybody's recommendations. If we're not considering that change, I just believe that if we're going to put it in one specific plan or one planning area, it should be the south valley planning area because that's where the work is being generated.
Mr. Burnson.
Basically, this, whatever we do today is not necessarily in cement for the future. But I think you've heard all the facts. I can understand the comments about the various organizations and so forth, but you know, Mr. Hernandez has a point. If you're going to have a planning commission that's operating, it should be, it should be consistent with the community plan areas. That, you know, and one of those things may have to happen. In fact, some of the things that are happening right now with Lafco may have a big outcome on this. Because if the Laf, if the valley's petition is successful, Mulholland will be the boundary. And, you know, those are things that need to be considered. So, but whatever is done today, and I, you know, and I'm, and I'm not in cement necessarily on this, because the main thing I thought that was important was keeping the corridor together. The overlay zones that Mrs. Goldberg mentioned, I brought that up at the first committee meeting when somebody, I forget who it was, I won't mention any names, and I said, well, that's fine, we'll put all the hillsides in there. That includes the Santa Susana Mountains, and which means that it should be in my district because I have the majority of the hillside area, the largest portion in the city, believe it or not. You know, but unfortunately, this party didn't even know where the Santa Susana Mountains were. So the point is that whatever we do today, it's important that we kept Mulholland together. I think that common sense and doing what our department feels is easiest and best for them to handle and makes it easier for the majority of the people who are going to be involved, which tells you that two-thirds of the cases fall into the south valley area, that's the way we ought to go to start with. Now, whether we change that later on, that's a matter for conjecture. We'll feel our way along as we go along. But I would urge an I vote on the majority report. In all due respect to Ms. Misakowski and the Santa Monica Mountain folks who are here testifying the other way, they're really, basically, usually the people who are here in opposition to various things. They're not the applicants. These are the people we hear that are here on every single case that comes up, and then, you know, and not that we haven't listened, we've protected Mulholland. While I was chair of the committee, we, we approved the Mulholland Specific Ordinance, Specific Plan Ordinance, Dirt Mulholland, and the DRB for Mulholland. So it's not that we aren't interested in protecting Mulholland, and that's not going to change. The point is, what is best for the city and the people who are actually going to be involved and where the land use is going to take place? And the answer is, in the south valley portion. I would urge an I vote on the majority report.
But first, Mr. Holden.
The people in the Santa Monica Mountains, is that what you're talking about, Mr. Burnson? Don't want to be a part of the valley? You have a chance to vote on that. And when it comes before the people of the city is whether or not, because the valley is separate, you're included, and you're a part of the valley. So if you vote no on that matter before the council, I mean, for the city, then you're, then you're right on. But for now, Mr. Burnson is saying that the activity is in the southern part of the valley, he's a good guy and knows his way around on these planning issues. So I understand sixty-eight percent of this whole area is in the south valley portion, right, Mr. Burnson? And for that reason, reluctantly, because I don't want it to separate anyway, I'm going to have to go along with it.
All right. The first vote will be on whether to substitute the minority report for the majority report.
No vote on this.
Ms. Misakowski wants a yes vote, and Mr. Burnson wants a no vote. Open the roll.
Wait, 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 wait. Get her out of the way.
Okay, we're going to open the roll. I won't close the roll until you get there, but we're going to open the roll on whether to substitute. A yes vote substitutes the minority report, and no vote does not substitute the minority report. Okay. All right. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, seven noes.
All right, so that was not approved. The... Oh, is this a war? Sorry, I missed that somewhere along the debate here. Yeah, well, now we're going to vote on the majority report.
Did she have this chip?
Yeah, it did. She, she voted no. Hold on a second here. Do you, are you serious? Do you want to move to reconsider?
Does that have this chip?
No, she won. I just want to know if you want to reconsider so we can keep the show on the road here. All right, we're now voting on the majority report. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
All right, that is approved.
Fourth with.
Fourth with. Next item.
Item number thirty-three.
All right, we have one member of the public who wishes to be heard. We also have an amending motion on the desk.
Yes.
Two amending motions.
Madam President, we have motion thirty-three A, which is merely a technical amendment because there was a minor increase in cost.
Well, wait, 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 hold on. Okay, so thirty-three A is a technical amendment, and thirty-three B is an actual amending motion.
Oh, what does this say?
Well, it's actually, it's actually...
All right, there's, okay, but we, we also have somebody who wants to be heard. So first, we're going to hear from, as soon as I find what I did with this card, from Mr. Williams, from the Fire Department.
How are you doing today?
Go ahead.
I am the supervisor of the ambulance billing section, and I'm here to, today to speak on behalf of the employees who work for me. There are three proposals today for the move for our section as to whether to move to Figaroa Plaza with or without the furniture or a minority report to Spring Street. The people in this section have been working there for approximately twelve years in substandard conditions, and now there is an opportunity for the council to do something that is both respectful and giving to these people who have worked very tirelessly over the years under very difficult and bad conditions. Very briefly, I believe that the council should approve the employees to not only be able to move to Figaroa Plaza, but they should also approve for them to receive the new furniture and have it build out instead of having them to accept the existing furniture that is in the location. Last year, this particular section met the budget for the ambulance billing, which was twenty-seven million dollars. There's an approximate budget request for this section of about twenty-six and a half million dollars, which I believe that our staff will not only meet but exceed this year. I think that this is a great opportunity for the council to show, show respect and show kindness and approval for the type of work that these people have put forth and the kind of effort that they have done over this past year. This process began over a year ago, and during that particular time period, these people have still worked under these conditions while the wheels of bureaucracy have moved very slowly in moving them out of the section, even though it was determined by a personnel report that they were working in substandard conditions. So it is my request and my asking of you today that you would approve them moving to Figaroa Plaza with new furniture for the new location. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that closes the public hearing. There being nobody else that I know of who wants to speak on that, and we will go first to Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I'd like to move communication from the Chair of Personnel Committee C and also thirty-three B, which takes the appropriation in item one and does it correctly, which it was not done correctly. The bulk of the money is in furniture and technical equipment, not in contractual services, as thirty-three B notes. Let me just say...
So wait, 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 can I just make sure? I won't take, take this off your time, but can I just make sure we understand?
Right.
You're moving thirty-three B...
No, thirty-three, I'm moving...
Thirty-three B is the...
I'm moving thirty-three C on the report, but then amendment thirty-three B...
That's what I wanted to clarify. So, so the motion thirty-three B, which is not in the agenda, your amendment, changes C that's in the agenda.
That's correct. That's correct. Does not raise the money, though.
Right. It's C as amended by this extra motion.
Thirty-three B, that's correct.
Okay, now, you're back on your time. Go ahead.
Thank you. For twelve years, they, this group of folks has worked in literally what we would call rabbit warrants at the top of this building. We went and looked at it, they were, the areas that they worked in were so close that you would have to actually keep your elbows in when you were typing or you would hit the person next to you, and I am not exaggerating. While they were in that condition, they, they actually raised for this city in billing twenty-seven million dollars last year. Now, that's an extraordinary thing, and now they violated the city's own standard, not they did, that we did, in how much space they're supposed to have. And now what we're arguing over here is about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars more in my proposal than the one that came from Budget and Finance, which over seven years is not even twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. For twenty-five thousand dollars a year, the people who have been working for twelve years in substandard conditions can not only have the appropriate amount of space, finally, by city standards, but can have the equipment to make their work actually done in a way that it should be done. I do not believe that we will miss the twenty-five thousand dollars a year each year for the next seven years that this represents, and I do believe that we owe this group of employees the same standard we would have in our own offices. And this, by the way, won't do that, but it gets closer to that. And I just think it would be, in my view, clearly a problem to say that for the savings of about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, which is the difference between the two, the two reports, that we would not go all the way and actually provide an appropriate working area. And that's why I move C and I change with thirty-three B only how the numbers are aligned, not the total cost of the, of the amount.
All right.
And urge an I vote.
So the basic difference between B and C on the agenda is the amount of money?
No, A and C, A and C.
A and C, I'm sorry.
Is the amount of money.
The amount of money.
That's correct. And it's for furniture.
Okay. Mr. Fuhr.
Madam President, if you could hold my time while the CAO gives a brief report on this matter, I'd appreciate it.
Done. Go ahead.
We were asked to locate appropriate space for the ambulance billing unit, the Emergency Medical Services Billing Unit, and reviewed a number of locations. Our recommendation is the location on Figaroa Plaza, which is built out, includes, which means that there are, that it has modular furniture to accommodate most of the staff, that we would have to add a few units, which the recommendation provides funding for. We selected that location because it is, it would allow for the fastest occupancy for this unit to get them out of the intolerable working conditions that they're currently working under, and it would provide, it would be the most cost-effective location for them to be in.
Do you want to speak to the hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar difference between...
Well, in coming up with our recommendation, we looked at, one, the most expedient way to address this, this problem. The difference, a hundred and eighty-six thousand, would represent replacing the existing modular furniture with new modular furniture. The existing space creates a work area of about forty-eight square feet. It's about six by eight, six by eight. Whereas the, as Councilwoman Goldberg mentioned, the, what's been recommended as a city, it's been characterized as a standard or, or a guideline, is an eight by eight workstation. Well, looking at the existing space, and that, and it was a critical factor in our recommendation, the forty-eight feet consists of all of its usable space. It's very effec, efficient, very effective, effective, usable space. And that, we didn't think that the additional, the additional, or the new workstations would create that much of a difference to, to warrant expenditure of an additional about a hundred ninety thousand, a hundred and eighty-six thousand. And given where we're at now, we think it's the most prudent way to go.
Okay, just say again how many employees we're talking about in this hundred and eighty-six thousand.
We're, we're talking about thirty-six employees.
Thirty-six, thank you. Okay, Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you very much. I, I'd like to move an alternative. I'd like to move thirty-three A, which is the Budget and Finance Majority Report, which conveniently is also amended by Technical Amendment thirty-three A, so it's, it's easy. The, as Ms. Goldberg points out, and the CAO has underscored, the major difference is a cost difference here. There's also some benefit, as the CAO just mentioned, to using the furniture that's already there because it enables people who've been working in lousy conditions to move more rapidly into better conditions. So there's a speed issue, but there's also a money issue, and I think that both of those matters, getting the workers to a better place more quickly and doing so in a way that's cost-effective while at the same time elevating their working conditions dramatically, makes sense. The CAO made this recommendation to Budget and Finance. Just so we're clear, colleagues, there were, was a majority and a minority report in Budget and Finance. Ms. Misakowski and I were in the majority. Ms. Walters was not here this morning, was in the minority, her view being that this particular location at Figaroa was not the better location, that she would have preferred to focus rather on a Spring Street location. So that's where the, the various positions fall on this. I do recommend that we adopt the course that gets the workers quickest to better space and does so in the most cost-effective way, and therefore support thirty-three A and minor amendment thirty-three A, which just adds two thousand dollars to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Hi, right here. Madam colleague and colleagues, madam colleague, madam president and colleagues, I'm sorry. I do rise in support of the Goldberg amendment. I believe it's time that we showed our employees that their welfare and their productivity is our top priority, and they have come to us and said that in order to really do a good job, we, they need to be respected and given the proper tools. So I want to urge everyone to support Goldberg's motion on this issue.
Okay, just so we're clear, the order in which this is going to come up is Ms. Goldberg moved hers first, so the first vote, unless something else comes up, will be whether to substitute Mr. Fuhr's motion for Ms. Goldberg's, and then depending what happens, we vote on that. Mr. Hernandez is next.
And I guess I'm supporting the Goldberg motion. I just wanted to ask a different kind of question because we're talking about equipment. LA shares helped us acquire equipment for the new Board of Enquiries Report Investigation in terms of some of the office space, is that correct?
No.
No?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
LA shares.
For some of the, for some of the equipment, but not, for the office space, for the office, the space for the office of Inspector General?
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
Yes, they helped us find some furniture.
What kind of furniture?
I think there's some desks and chairs and—
Okay.
Basic office furniture.
The only reason I was asking the question is because there was something that had to real quick, and they're a resource that I don't think we as a city have been using as much as we could. Is there any way we can kind of institutionalize trying to use them on an ongoing basis and finding more financial support for them?
We can, but it's a hit-and-miss situation. We just happened to get lucky that a corporation had moved and left their furniture, and we took old stuff, old furniture.
Yeah.
Very old furniture.
Yeah, but it's one phone call to L.A. Shares to find this stuff.
But, no, and, one, I want to thank L.A. Shares for doing that, and it made me aware of the importance of their work, especially when they're working with nonprofits, and, two, I want to support the Goldberg motions. But we want to try and provide the best possible equipment and facilities for our staff in the long run. We find that that works the best, and I just don't know if we make enough of those phone calls.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Goldberg.
Just to close.
Yes, to close.
Yeah, I would just close by saying that we very rarely have an opportunity to do something that tells employees that have worked hard under substandard conditions how much we appreciate that they did that all those years. 12 years is a long time to have worked in the conditions that they were in. Mr. Wax's motion on this issue was about meeting what has been described as a standard for the city, and that is 48 square feet, and I think we should do nothing less than to meet that 48—
64.
64, pardon me, 64 square feet. 48 is awfully small, isn't it? Oh, my God. 64 square feet. We should do nothing less than Mr. Wax's motion called for. I think that it's an important statement for us to make, and it is not going to break the bank to spend what amounts to about $25,000 or $26,000 a year over the seven years for the contract, and I urgent I vote for my motion.
All right, thank you. Now, just so I'm clear about this, if they got the furniture from L.A. Shares and they didn't have to spend $186,000, you don't really mind if they wasted money, do you?
I don't have any problem about furniture. We're real—most of this cost is about modulators and improvements to make sure they have the actual square footage in the room that they need. I don't have any problem with the other—
So we have two motions on the floor. The first vote will be on whether to substitute Mr. Fuhr's motion for Ms. Goldberg's motion. Open the roll. On whether to substitute.
Ask for no vote.
Open the roll, close the roll. Everybody ready? Tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, eight noes.
All right, so that was not—the substitution was not approved, and Ms. Goldberg's motion is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Yes, including the amendment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, as amended. Next item. Item number 42, called special by Councilmember Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco. Push the little speaker thing, please.
I just wanted to—I called it special because we have 42A and 42B. I just wanted it to be passed along with 40 and 41 that passed earlier with those two amendments. So I just wanted to make sure the amendments were part of 42. This for outreach and the different—
Say that again. We have two separate amendments to Item 42, right?
Right. And the two amendments are to include different parts of the city in the census outreach, as was done in 40 and 41.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Anybody else? Mr. Ridley—no? All right.
Sorry.
Thank you. Hold it. All right.
Can you make a vote?
Yeah, unless you want to ask a question. Go ahead and ask the question.
Just a second.
Well, we're going to find out in a second. We have amendments to add—
I just have a question on all of them.
Go right ahead.
It's the same question on all of them. It's a generic question. We have a—
Who do you want to answer it, though?
Oh, that's a very good question. I was hoping whoever is running the census program for the city—
Well, all right, ask the question. We'll see if we can get an answer.
The question I have is, is—because I looked at these, obviously, undercounting hurts us all. The issue of having different folks do it in different areas obviously makes sense to me, but only if they are able to do the part that is the hardest, which is to reach people who are basically homeless or basically fearful or things like that. And some of these organizations, as I look at them, doesn't seem to me that's what they do. So I really wanted to just basically be assured that what we're trying to do is to reach the hardest possible group of people to reach, then I'd be very happy to support it. And I'd like to ask each of the makers of these various motions to do that, because all of us have community-based organizations that would like some money to help this. I didn't put that in because I don't think any of them have the expertise to find the people that are the most afraid of turning in this information.
Okay. Mr. Padilla, you think you can answer that? Go ahead.
Yeah, appreciate the concern, and actually, that's the very gist of these motions. The motions and the amendments that have been introduced by both Councilmember Pacheco and Holden are consistent with the census work plan that this council has adopted. We're only giving additional feedback. The Census Director has been part of this process, and the reason we've chosen these organizations specifically is because they do have that local experience and that local expertise. So we're on the same page here, and I do ask for your support.
Okay, did that answer your question?
As much as I can get.
All right. In that case, the matter is before us. Now, we have several—we have two amending motions. Do we want to vote separately on the amended—
Can we take one vote with Item 42 with both amendments?
Well, unless somebody wants to object to the amendments. Seeing none, we will take one vote on Item 42 as amended by both amendments. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
An unanimous vote. And let's do forthwith on Item 33 after we went through all of that. Okay, next item. Item number 43, called special by Councilmember Ms. Zakowski. Ms. Zakowski.
Madam President, this is a motion, actually, Mr. Ridley Thompson's introduced. I understand that we have someone from Reckon Park here. I just want to stand in support of it, but also, this is the issue of the recently passed state propositions 12 and 13, which deal with parks and protecting our water and natural resources, that the city is now going to be eligible to compete for grants. I think we've had some expertise and experience in that, given Prop K, but I would like to hear from the Recreation and Parks Department about what they are already looking at doing in terms of seeking that information from the state, in terms of how those grants would break down and the categories that we can look at. So I think Mr. Dugan is here.
Go ahead.
I'm John Dugan with the Department of Recreation and Parks. The approved Proposition 12 provides for $43 million in per capita and Robert E. Zeeberg-Harris funds available to the department, excuse me, to the city. The department is working diligently to identify possible park acquisition opportunities for this $43 million. As you probably know from your own communities, Los Angeles is a very park-poor community, and we're identifying acquisitions as a very high priority for the per capita funds. In addition to the $43 million per capita, the city is eligible to compete for $266 million in competitive grant opportunities in a very wide variety of categories. The State Department of Parks and Recreation has been contacted, and we are in concert with them trying to develop the appropriate criteria that will enable our proposals to receive favorable consideration by the state. So we believe that we're well on the way to making our proposals strong ones and competitive with other activities and other proposals from throughout the state.
Glad to hear it. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I'd like Mr. Deaton to please come up, because what I wanted to do is—I appreciate the spirit of the motion, and I support the spirit of the motion. I wanted to introduce a slight amendment to the second instruction—or not the second instruction, but the further move that it include the CED committee, because we're dealing with a block grant as well as the neighborhood facilities, and currently there's an RFP going on in that regard. But what I—the reason I wanted Mr. Deaton here is because I really appreciate the fact that the motion that's talking about a city work plan, which I think is very key. I think that we would be in trouble if we had one department basically trying to oversee this grant application process, because now with the inception of Prop K, Prop A funds, now you have 12 and 13, the restoration of river corridors and so forth, I think it's important that we continue to coordinate our potential efforts to develop open space as well as neighborhood facility citywide, and that we try and take advantage of our opportunities by being able to leverage these opportunities as much as possible. And our applications would be much more competitive if they have that leveraging concept before them. My experience has not been one of—that I would call very positive in terms of an individual department to accomplish a project on a timely manner. It's been more through oversight and the creation of oversight committees that has included the engineer, the CLA, the CAO, that's been able to expedite many projects. It hasn't happened individually by department. And so I basically am asking if this work plan is put together and the strategy overall, that it also be referred to the CED committee, or that a task force of these committee chairs be put together to kind of oversee it. But that's the only question I'm asking, and it's because we're constantly dealing with—at the CED level, the block grant level, part of leverage it.
Turn that into a question, and then I'll ask Mr. Deaton to answer it.
One, I asked Mr. Deaton how CED would be included in the process, but how do we coordinate the whole—the whole process of the applications?
Okay, try that.
What his recommendation would be.
Maybe the recommendation should just be the President ensure that the proper committees or committee chairs are all involved in the process of the motion, and we'll make sure that happens.
I promise. John will promise. All right. Anybody else? In that case, open the roll on Item 43, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, Mr. Fuhr had called Item 45 special. You're okay? Item 45 is before us, ladies and gentlemen. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, and that probably ought to go forthwith. Next item. Sorry, Mr. Padilla, what's up?
That Items 40, 41, and 42 go forthwith.
Okay, without objection, forthwith on those items. Item 49, we have several people who wish to be heard. Seem to have more people who wish to be heard. All kinds of people who wish to be heard. Hold on. All right, do you—I see the staff assembling. Do you want to give us a report, a brief report, before I open the public hearing?
Yes, George Rakas.
Hold on, we need your mic on. You got him? Go ahead.
George Rakas, Convention Center. We're requesting approval of the Item 136, I believe, in regards to the—what is it? The exemption from city service, I'm sorry, for city employees. I apologize.
I know, these numbers can get—can catch you up here a little bit.
Exemption 126 ruling.
All right, but I think what we probably want to hear from you is a very short summary of what it is you're actually asking the council to approve, once we've—
We're asking approval of the custodial service contract that was awarded to Pettis Building Services, which received the highest rating of the evaluating committee for the Convention Center custodial services contract.
All right, and I believe we have two different recommendations before us, and we also have a number of people who want to be heard. Is there anybody—is there—first of all, we've got a Personnel Committee report and also a Community and Economic Development Committee report. But the dates are different. So what does that mean? We have to have—
[inaudible]
All right, so—but the content of the reports is the same, all right? Just so we're comfortable with that. All right, sit tight. We have a public hearing. I'm going to call first the people who are opposed to the proposal and then those who are in favor, and the whole thing's going to happen in 10 minutes or less. First David Cunningham, then Mr. Park, who is speaking with Mr. Charlie Chung. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you very much, Madam President and members of the council. First of all, I'd like for the honor to speak before I do. That's Mr. Charlie Chung.
That would be fine.
He has a very limited statement to make.
Afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. Madam President, members of the council, my name is Charlie Chung, and I am president of Expert Development Service. Expert Development is a certified minority business enterprise located at 836 Crenshaw Boulevard, Los Angeles. We have been the maintenance contractor at the Convention Center since 1991. Over the years, we have performed our duties with supreme care professionalism and the utmost efficiency, and have received letters of appreciation from the previous general manager as well as the current general manager. I have copies of the letters here for your review. The former general manager routinely called me into his office to complete the export development service on the cleanliness of the Convention Center and showcase our work to out-of-town cast officials from similar facility. I have four points I'd like to bring to your attention with the help of my consult team. Thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you.
We wanted to give him an opportunity to speak, because as you can see, he is a first-generation immigrant to this country, and he has his concerns. But, Madam Chairman, more than anything, we are concerned about the bid process and how you carried out on an equal footing. It appears as though when this was put together—
Dave, I think it would be useful if you'd mention who you're representing, so just so we're clear on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is David Cunningham. I'm the owner of Dave Cunningham and Associates, and I represent Expert Development Service, who is the present incumbent for the custodial services for the Convention Center. As we—and I want to say to the committee, the Personnel—the Personnel Committee particularly, because they were very—they were very considered, timed, and looking into this matter. I circulated a letter with you to let you know I feel that the bid process was indeed tainted. Additionally, we have circulated with you the number of letters of commendation that have been received by the former general manager of the department, as well as those by the present general manager, and it was not reflected in the evaluation of the objective proposals that we responded to. Additionally, when you take a look at the requests within that proposal, and we went through it thoroughly, there was no request for anything about risk management. Additionally, when you take a look at that proposal, you're asked to give a specific listing of your equipment by number and how you plan to use it. We found that the present recommended company did not list their number, did not list the specific amount of equipment they were going to use. And finally, we were told that because of the fact that this present bid by Pettis has offered and guaranteed to provide risk management services to the Convention Center at the rate of about $10,000 a month, $120,000 a year, I have been in touch with your risk manager for the city. Presently, the Convention Center has an as-needed consultant on a risk management basis, not to exceed $50,000 per annum. In the normal course of business, custodial service, and particularly, we have a supplier here who supplies Expert Development with their supplies, who maintains a risk management program and has presented it and has done it in the normal course of business at no additional cost to the Convention Center. Now, if you're willing to pay an additional $120,000 a year, on top of the $50,000 that you already pay, which the Convention Center and their evaluation committee said was the difference in the report, then that's what you will be doing over the life of this contract. You will be paying about $360,000 more than you—than what my client has bid to you. We would ask that you would take a closer look— We would ask that you would take a closer look at what has been presented to you. We feel that the bid process has indeed been tainted and has been, not been done on a fair and level playing field. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. We have some experts here...
Okay, thank you.
...who can answer questions for you.
All right, but we have some other people who want to be heard. The next speaker, I'm going to apologize in advance for mispronouncing your name, John Simcheck from Clean Source. Was I close?
You were close, Madam President and members. My name's John Smitsak. I am an account executive for Clean Source. We currently do business in the county of Los Angeles. We currently did it under formal names as First Company in Peerless Products as well. Our primary duties are the sale and distribution of janitorial supplies to the industry professionals, training of staff at our facility or onsite, and the supporting of the industry professionals in the way of consulting. Mr. Cunningham, as he mentioned, had asked me to come today to speak on behalf of Expert Development, kind of giving you a thumbnail of what we provide in the way of risk management, some of the issues, the hot topics that clean professionals run against on a day-to-day basis, and those are, of course, slip and falls, indoor air quality, cross-contamination, which basically breaks down to superstaff infections, MRSA, VRE, and then, of course, the newest and latest one is MCS, which is multiple chemical syndrome. Today, we're going specifically, I've been asked to address some of the slip and fall issues and primarily encompass it into what we consider to be industry standards, both by the manufacturer, which is one part of the equation, distributors, industry professionals, and then finally, the facility risk managers that are onsite. It's very important that a risk management or risk incident program be put into place. But with that being said, I think what we're finding out as time goes on is the success of the program, especially with regards to slip and falls, is that the maintenance of that program is driven not only by the products, but by the procedures and the personnel that are in the facility and actually dealing with this on a day-to-day basis. And with that, I will wrap it up. I see the signal there.
That's the signal.
But if there's any further questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those directly.
Thank you. Next, we switch to those who are actually for the proposal. First, Mr. Dick Jackson, to be followed by SEIU.
Good afternoon, President Glanter and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll speak briefly. I am Dick Jackson. I'm president of Pettis Building Services, and I'm responsible for all of our activities throughout the United States. Pettis Building Services is part of a billion-dollar organization. We're financially sound, and we're fully experienced in the kind of work that we've bid on here. Mr. Dan Ayala, our regional manager, is with me today. He's responsible for running the subject contract, and I've been excited, Dan and I have been excited, about starting to clean this Convention Center ever since we were advised that we'd been selected bidder several months ago. We're fully experienced in cleaning large, high-traffic facilities in particular, for example, Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX Terminal One, which is one of the very busiest of the terminals, and I went through it myself just a couple times last week. Two of the very largest county hospitals, Harbor UCLA and Olive View Medical Center, and several smaller ones, and outside of town, Dallas Convention Center, Reunion Arena in Dallas and the like. We are not only going to meet, but exceed the living wage requirements of the city. We are a signatory to the master agreement with Local eighteen seventy-seven of SEIU, the Service Employees International Union. We provide, in addition to the required minimum wages, full medical and full pension benefits at a significant additional cost to us, and we do that because we think it's the right thing to do. Pettis prides itself in providing superior service at a fair price while adhering to the highest ethical and legal standards. In particular, we follow all labor laws. We'll appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Byron Moret.
Madam President, members of council, I'm Byron Moret with SEIU Local eighteen seventy-seven, and basically, I'm here in support of Pettis Services obtaining the custodial contract at the LA Convention Center. We believe it would be very advantageous for the employees, as with Pettis, they would be covered under a collective bargaining agreement that would provide for a living wage as health, as well as health and welfare and pension benefits, and the protection through a grievance and arbitration procedure. We have a long history with Pettis at various other facilities, including county hospitals, whose employees are currently covered by a collective bargaining agreement, and we're in full support.
It's a pleasure to see you here. It's something you feel you can support.
Thank you.
All right, that closes the public hearing. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, this was initially not heard in personnel, but an appeal was made, and it was heard in personnel, and after all was said and done, we came to the conclusion that Pettis should be awarded the, the contract. However, I do want to make a couple of statements about why there was concern. First of all, there was a concern that on Charter Section one twenty-six, that SEIU three forty-seven had not had an appropriate opportunity to, to bid on this, and we did put in the Personnel Committee Report, which I'm going to now move. The conclusions are the same, but it has an additional item that requests that the Convention Center develop with the union protocol to make sure we don't have that kind of dispute happen again, and everybody was agreeable to it, so that's why I'm moving this. The other problem is, is that you have a contractor that had been, by at least all of the letters that I've seen, highly recommended by the Convention Center, that loses nineteen points during the interview. It had been the second highest scoring on the original proposal. The first highest was not even in the race. It was natural, and I don't know why they were excluded, but they were. Oh, they lost seventeen points during the, during the interview. And we went through all of that, and we understand it, but I will say this, that I, I think it was just a little distressing to see a minority-owned firm that had been doing service in the Convention Center for a long time not somehow or another be led to understand they would have a hard time competing. And I don't know if there's a solution to this or not, but it was the only part of it that bothered me. When you get letters like some of the letters, and you've all read them, written, I mean, they, they could have been written by the contractor themselves, and then to lose nineteen points in the interview, you wonder whether style or other things that might not be relevant could have come into place, and I'm not going to second-guess them, that's why we didn't overturn the, the recommendation. But, and I just want to quote from one of the letters, so you see what I mean. At one point, the previous contractor and the, and the appellate here actually was asked to reduce by five percent the costs of continuing to clean the Convention Center, and they actually did so. And there is a letter here dated April fourth from a building superintendent, too, that says, basically, "We've been monitoring the mutually agreed-upon five percent reduction contract, and I'm happy to say you deserve high praises and congratulations. There are few businesses in our current marketplace who would respond in such a valiant manner in spite of the necessary cost reductions imposed on your company. Not only have you managed to effectively reduce staff, but have successfully inspired efficiency and performance without even the slightest reduction in quality that you become known for in the eyes and the minds of every one of the clients." You understand, after receiving a letter like this, that then to lose nineteen points in the interview process, which takes you from second to fourth, or something like that, certainly below the current awardee, and that's a part of the process I don't have an explanation for, and I do want you to know it was very disturbing to those of us who had to hear this. It's hard to explain to a contractor how they can get praise in letter after letter and then yet lose nineteen points, which is, by the way, in these things, a significant reduction. So, that's the issue that brought this to a head and why there was a controversy. Having said all of that, in committee, we heard from the bureau, the Convention Center Bureau, and they explained there were reasons that they felt were compelling to them. As a committee of two on that day, we could not find sufficient cause to overturn the Convention Center's recommendation, which is why we didn't. But you understand why there was the concern and what the disturbance is to people under these circumstances.
Right. Okay, but your motion is the Personnel Committee recommendation, correct? Okay. Mrs. Check. All right.
Wait, 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 wait. Come on now, you've got to hear both sides. Yeah.
No, I am going to let him talk. I was about to say that Mr. Holden hasn't spoken yet, and he's entitled to be heard. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Ms. Check. And Ms. Goldberg, that last letter you read praising the current contractor is very disturbing. Reminds me why some people at some time, although it's changed now, felt that we needed an affirmative action program. And even though they didn't have the right SAT scores because they were disadvantaged in other areas, they were able to do the coursework. And likewise, with the present contractor, he'd been doing it for years and years and years, and at the same time, he's doing it at a better price, eight hundred thousand big ones, over a three-year term. I don't understand where the, where the general manager's coming from, except for the fact that there's an undercurrent, which I'm sure he would rather that I not discuss in a public And for that reason, I won't, but I'm going to pin your ears later on about this, because you ought not let your personality and your social involvement enter into this when somebody tells you, "Don't give them the contract who's close to you." Now, you can't do that, because it's a judgmental call. When you, we're getting a better deal, and then you say, "No," you have a guy who did very well with the SAT scores because he's had a long track record of providing this service for us, and you say, "No," when are we going to start being subjective? What you're doing, for whatever reason, is dead wrong. And for that reason, there is no way under any circumstances that I can say, "Let's give this guy," what is his name, Pettis or whatever, Pettis, more of the taxpayer's money to provide the same service that we could get for eight hundred thousand dollars less over a three-year period. How do you justify that? You tell me, how do you justify that?
Well, I would like to address that because I believe there's some misinformation that is being...
But the price is different. It's set right here.
Well, first of all, the evaluating committee reviewed the bids, evaluated the bids, and selected the contractor. I had recused myself of any involvement in the review process, bidding process...
Why? Why you recuse yourself?
Because my wife was a former employee of the company, and she has started her own company.
And somebody said, "Yeah, well, you know, you get down to it now." But anyway, I don't want to put that on the table yet.
Well, I, since you raised the issue, I would like to address it to the court for the council.
Well, go ahead, then, hold my time. Hold my time.
I believe it's important that the bidding process be above any reproach and be subject to scrutiny, and the integrity of the process must be maintained at all times. And that is the reason I recused myself from the bidding process, from the evaluating process, from the, any, from the selection process. It was done by staff and one of our commissioners, and their decision is what came forward to this council. I was not involved in any manner whatsoever in the decision-making process in this contract.
That's just like saying, "I'm not going to vote on this matter, but you know where I stand." And that's about all I can say on this matter. I think that what you've done here is, is not proper, totally improper, and if need be, we should have an investigation, maybe grand jury is necessary. I will stop at nothing less than, because we need to do the same thing over there as we're doing at Rampart. That's the way it looks to me, and it looks just that bad. Ms. Goldberg, having read that letter and all that years of experience, and you're going to stick by your guns, then you better fire him.
Mr. Hernandez.
I just wanted to ask the department, and again, none of these issues were before us when it came before CED. All these issues came about after the fact, and I just needed the department to address the issues, because if they would have been addressed at CED, we could have talked about them. The whole issue of the equipment disclosure and not being on there, and the points awarded for not having experience, or the experience factor, when in fact, the company had had the contract for nine years. Can you explain those to us?
I will have to refer to Noel Williams, who is our senior management analyst at the time, because she was part of the evaluating...
Because I always get confused when we give points to a company who hasn't worked for us, and then we take away points.
Do you want her to answer the question? Go ahead.
Noel Williams, speaking on behalf of the department. Actually, the experience was, the criteria contained in the RFP dealt with experience dealing in large commercial types of buildings. Experts' experience primarily was the Convention Center, Los Angeles Convention Center.
And that's not a large commercial building?
No, it is. What I was going to also say, and they also have some of the, the court systems, however, in terms of Pettis, not only do they have they done other convention centers, but they also have a couple of the terminals at the airport, they have the CBS building. As far as experience goes, they have equal to and/or more than the current contractor.
Yeah, but how many points was Pettis deducted because of their experience being the Convention Center and that not being deemed...
They weren't, Pettis was not deducted any points, and I don't have everything right before me, but as I remember, the expert and Pettis were probably fairly equal in the rating on the maximum...
Were you aware of why Mr. Rakas was recusing himself from this?
Well, one, he was really busy at the time, but two, it was turned over to staff... Excuse me. Terry has asked me to refer.
Terry Martin Brown, Assistant City Attorney. The city attorney's office, based on the information that we were presented with in this matter...
Was this information presented prior to the bidding process?
No, sir, it was not.
Was it presented after the award recommendation?
Well, can we find out what information it was? Go ahead.
I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it.
No, I know what, I'm trying to follow it.
I'm referring to the information regarding why Mr. Rakas recused himself from the process.
When was that request made, is what I need to know.
Are you referring, a request actually was not made.
Okay, when were you aware?
But this item was set for the agenda, and I was informed of it several days ago. At that time, I looked into it.
Oh, several days ago, after the recommendation was developed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, okay.
Well, looking into the information that we were provided with, we determined that Mr. Rakas's wife had been employed by Expert, formerly known as Olympia Building Services, approximately four years ago. So, in our determination, there would be actually no conflict of interest for Mr. Rakas, perhaps even if he had participated in the selection process, which he clearly did not. Mr. Alan P. Wan, who is to my extreme right here, monitored the process. He is a staffer at the Convention Center. The city attorney's office is satisfied that there were no irregularities in the bidding process and that the process was not tainted.
Okay. Mm-hmm. No, no, that's what I... Now, do you want to answer your question, the question I asked, because I know what the city attorney got? When were you aware that Mr. Rakas's wife was previously employed?
You know what, I was aware when I started, after I started the Convention Center, but it wasn't a factor, because I was running both the bid process and the evaluation process being monitored by one of my staff, which was Alan. So, it didn't come into play at all because he wasn't involved.
Okay.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I didn't know too much about this before it came on the floor today, and there's raised a number of questions. I'm almost going to have to quote one of my former colleagues, Gil Lindsay, when Gil once rose and said, it was a contested issue, and he said, "I got friends over here, and I got friends over here." He says, "All I can say is I'm going to be with my friends." And I think Joe remembers that, because he was here. But I can tell you that, and I think the important thing here, there are some questions that have been arisen that, in spite of any of my friends, I have to, I need to know some answers on. The real question is, as I understand it, the previous, the previous operator or contractor, contract... The real question is, as I understand it, the previous, the previous operator or contractor, was the low bidder, the lower bidder than the one that was recommended? Is that yes or no, answer? A yes or no is all I want.
The lower bidder or the low bidder?
Were they lower than the company that you're recommending?
Yes.
Okay. A yes or no now. Had they performed satisfactorily for the years that they were there? Yes or no?
I'm going to have to say no.
You're going to have to say no, okay. Then the letters and things that Mrs. Goldberg were talking about were incorrect. Is that what you're saying?
Maybe at the time that they were written, because that's a very old letter.
In what manner did they not, in what manner were they not satisfactory? Would you tell me that, please? Tell this council that?
Okay.
Yes, I want to hear. In what manner were they not satisfactory? Let's get to the bottom of it.
Better tell you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Some of the problems that have arisen with Expert Development over the last three years, which which I've been involved with at the Convention Center, have involved the following incidences. They had a worker who was working at the Convention Center, was injured in the line of duty. When it came time for that worker to go and claim workers' compensation benefits, Mr. Chung paid that worker a cash amount of funds, was not covering them under the workers' compensation requirements as he should have. At a much later date, within the past year or so, the Convention Center was sued under a claim because this employee said, "Hey, you know what? I got this. I don't have claims from my employer." And so I'm going to sue this-
Was that a requirement of the contract? Did he provide that?
Yes, it was. And our, and-
Okay, we'll get on to the next case then.
The next incident involved a set of employees. There was an altercation among employees. They came, went to Mr. Chung's office the next day after investigation, and the whole staff was fired. They came to the General Manager's office. I don't believe Mr. Rikus was there that day because I handled it. And through an interpreter, we were able to determine that, yes, there had been an altercation, but without full investigation and determining who the parties were, he systematically wiped out the whole crew. Now, ultimately, we did intercede on their behalf.
Okay, what was that? Any other instances besides that?
Yeah. Well, last week, the Department received that the Expert Development is out of compliance with the living wage ordinance, at least as of January. And their current hourly rate is thirteen ninety-nine per hour. Their bid rate is eleven ninety-nine per hour. If they cannot subsequently, if they cannot currently meet the city's regulations, there is probably no way that they're going to be able to make it on two dollars less an hour and a controlled hours usage.
And therefore, that's the difference in the bid amount. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand a little bit more.
One more incident?
Yeah.
Just to kind of top off what's on the top of my head, as a matter of fact. We again received multiple claims from patrons who come to the Convention Center. When our insurance company, who speaks on our behalf and handles these claims, because we're, we have a separate insurance company from the city, as opposed to self-insured, we have like firemen's or whatever-
Okay.
Went to, and joined because it appeared that there was some fault by Expert Development in some slip and fall cases. When they went to contact the insurance company and asked them to be a co-counselor or co-defendant, it was, and found out that the person who had provided the forms that are necessary for the City Attorney's Form had, did not have the appropriate authority to bind the insurance company.
Let me just ask one more question, and I'll sit down. All these types of incidents that you've just outlined, have you done an investigation of the other firm to ascertain that those types of activities haven't occurred in some of their other contracts?
When we were doing the reference checks on all the firms, we went to the airports because they're another city department, and they have not had those similar types of problems because they're in compliance on living wage, they have a very strong insurance company with the, through the CNA-
And their workman's comp is covered and all those other things. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Pacheco.
I'm sorry, I have questions, but I just want to understand, I was apologizing to Mr. Merely Thomas. I just want to ask if I understood this correctly. In the criteria establishment for the RFP, under experience, the criteria was set for large, experience in large contracts. At the same time, we knew that the incumbent's experience was limited to the Convention Center? I just wanted to-
I believe, believe the actual requirement had to do with the ability to clean over two hundred thousand square feet.
And when that, when that-
So they met the minimum criteria.
When that, they'd met the minimum criteria-
Right.
In terms of two hundred thousand square feet?
I can't call it off the top of my head, but it was, it was that they'd had experience at least doing one building that was of a minimum like two hundred thousand square feet of public cleaning area, or cleaning area.
Okay, and so the incumbent met the minimum requirement, but not sufficient enough to score any points?
No, they did, actually, on the experience, I think they were scored very high. And as I recall, the, the criteria was twenty-five points for experience, and I think that they received experience of twenty-five points or twenty-four points. It was the other areas that brought them down.
Okay, on my report that I have, under the interview scores, I have Pettis, natural, expert. I have experience for Pettis, one, for natural, negative two, expert, zero. Am I misreading the report?
That was what scores changed as a result of the interview. As you notice, experts, charges, fees, and experience and financial stability did not change.
Okay, so, okay, I just want to make sure I read this report accurately. So it's not that they got zero points, it's that based on the original presentation, the original scores were changed in some manner, and this grid I'm reading indicates the change in score.
Right. Each of the top three proposers was asked to come and discuss at length, make a presentation, discuss at length their proposal.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand the background and the facts of what we have here. So the original score was somewhere around twenty-four points, you indicated, roughly?
On experience, I'm thinking it's either twenty-three, twenty-four, it may have even been twenty-five, because it would have been average.
I love twenty-five.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Chick. Try it, see what happens.
Then I'm going to ask one question. I was about to move the previous question, but in terms of living wage, the company that had the contract was not paying the living wage?
The company that has, has the contract right now is Expert Development. The Department was notified last week that they've fallen out of compliance and are refusing to cooperate with the CAO.
In terms of paying the living wage?
In terms of getting audited and/or coming into compliance.
And their contract was done, was given and awarded subsequent to the city's passing the living wage ordinance?
No, actually, what happened is their contract was given prior to the living wage ordinance, was renewed on a one-year basis.
The renewal kicked in, the living wage.
The renewal kicked in, and actually, we've been on a month-to-month for coming on two years.
Okay. And then the final point, because one of my colleagues was talking about a rather large sum of money that is a differential here, and that is costing the city more for hiring this company, and I'd like you to just address that from my-
Right. The actual proposals that were submitted, there was a cost differential of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand per year. I think when we wrote the report, when the report was written and put out by the CAO, we asked that it be capped at four million dollars. But the actual proposal was three, five, four, seven by Pettis, which is the recommended company, and I think the actual difference was like three hundred and seventy-five thousand, total over a three-year period.
Total over three years, so about a hundred thousand?
Hundred and twenty thousand a year.
Yeah. I know we're always looking, colleagues, to save dollars. Unfortunately, I've heard, and I'm sure some of you have as well, some horror stories if we're always looking to award to low bidder, that it can't always be just about that, and clearly, it hasn't been here. And that often, awarding to the low bid ends up, for a variety of reasons, costing us more dollars, not less. But I am prepared to support the recommendation that's before us today, especially in light of what I just heard about the living wage issue currently. Thank you.
Mr. Wax.
What is your name?
Noel Williams.
I just wanted to compliment you on your intelligence and the clarity and the honesty and integrity. It's been very refreshing to hear your presentation.
Treasure this moment. Thank you very, very much. In fact, we'll get you a copy of the tape. Mr. Savornich.
Madam President, Members of the Council, I move the previous question on the entire matter.
Well, we've been at it for a while. Mr. Holden is the only one left who wants to speak, but he's already spoken, so we'll just, we'll just open the roll, well, we'll find out in a second. Open the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, eight noes.
All right, Mr. Holden, you're on.
Madam President, I mean, I want Mr. Cunningham to respond to some of the statements that were made. I asked him a specific question. Do they pay living wages? And the answer is yes. Have they been paying living wages? The answer has been yes. So you've gotten a different impression, and you should not be left with that. Before he uses up my time, which is okay, give me thirty seconds to say that about five years ago, Mr., the current owner was really being, and I used to use the word, harassed by the administration over there, about they're saying they're not doing this and they're not doing that. And I very quietly had my staff guy, because Koreans would come to me and say, "Here's why we're being treated." He took a camera over, and I had a video, the entire complaint area that had been identified by the management. Then I called management over, and I showed them the video of what they had complained about, and I says, "You say this is wrong? Let's watch the video." They watched the video, they changed, they said, "Well, we're going to reconsider, and that's not so bad. He's okay." They left him alone up until now. This is crazy. Why do these minorities, immigrants, have to jump through hoops? Because they want to take care of some other people? It's wrong. Okay, Mr. Cunningham, respond to those questions. You know, you and I don't talk much, but you can respond to this.
Don't say that to anybody. Mr. Holden, you're still my councilman. What you have, I'm having passed out, is when we contacted the administration who has responsibility for the living wage ordinance, they had the wrong address for contacting Expert Development to let them know about what the increase was. They could not, they could not increase their employees without knowing. I talked to June Gibson, immediately upon finding that out. Expert Development researched its records and has paid every employee that they have to date for the increase. And the only way they could do that increase was to be notified by the agency that has overview of it. And I'm going to tell you, if you want to talk to June Gibson, you can talk to her, because we contacted her immediately when we received the notice. And there's been some trouble with the ability of the agency to get out to the various contractors, particularly contractors at the Convention Center, the need for the increase. Now, Mr. Chung is here, he can answer those other allegations that have been made. Additionally, I have with me the RFP that went out to my client. We have spent days going through this. This RFP-
Mr. Cunningham, you're supposed to be answering the allegations that other people made, and Mr. Holden's time's going to run out in a minute, so why don't you finish up, finish up, so we can get the story on through here.
Madam President, one of the things that was stated by Noel Williams, in our honesty, was that this was a complete change in terms of the way it had been done. I have both the night, the one that went out recently, as well as the last one that went out before that one.
And I might assume you're going to read both of them?
And the changes in the RFPs have been, have been very, very unsimilar. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? In that case, we have before us Ms. Goldberg's original motion, which was the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, which is the same as the recommendation, the other one on the agenda, except at a later date. Open the roll on the Personnel Committee recommendation. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, two noes.
That is approved. It's approved anyway.
Thanks.
And let's do it forthwith, so we can get this underway here. Next item. Thank you all for your time.
Next item not on the agenda is Special One Motion brought in by Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Holden. The City Attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
All right, Members of the Council, in case you're going to want to know what you're voting on, we have Special One. Ms. Weingard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This last Monday, the CED Committee approved a CAO's report recommending three bond resolutions for issuance of the Industrial Development Authority bonds. They must be okayed by Friday, which is the SIDLAC deadline. I've been notified that council will not have a quorum on Friday. Therefore, the council need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and that there is an immediate need to act.
All right, we'll vote first on the findings. Open the roll, close the roll.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, the matter is now before us. Anybody wish to say anything? Seeing none, open the roll on the substantive matter, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Forthwith. Okay, now, just to fill in the, for those who may have missed that in passing, it appears that there will, there were only ten of us expected on Friday in any case, because a number of us plan to attend the funeral of Officer Villa Lobos. We will not have a quorum, and we will not have a meeting on Friday. All agenda items from Friday will be continued into next week. And that brings us to the next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
All right, we do not have any cards. Is there anybody in the chamber who wishes to be heard on items not on today's agenda? Seeing none, the public comment period is closed. And the next item.
Motions for posting and referral.
Those are approved.
Have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Wax requests to be excused Tuesday, March 28th. Personal business meets council policy.
Well, in that case, it's approved.
Councilwoman Burnson requests also to be excused Tuesday, March 28th. Personal business meets council policy.
That is also approved.
That clears the desk for closed session.
All right, and Mr. Savornich is waving goodbye. Let me give you some, give you a roadmap. All right, we're going to go into closed session, so will those of you not involved in the closed session please disappear? It's, they assure me it's going to be quick. Things we have no choice over and things like that. Are we back? All right. Next item, forty-seven A.
Forty-seven A settlement in case Schwade versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item. Uh oh. We will do forthwith. Yeah, no, we did that already. We did forthwith on all of those. Okay, forty-seven B. No, no, yeah, we might as well. We'll do it on all of these. We're going to do it on all of these. Okay, go, forty-seven B.
Forty-seven B settlement in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in the case of Fisher versus the City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, forthwith on that. Item-
Forty-seven C settlement in the case of Helm versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Forthwith on that as well.
Forty-seven D settlement in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars in the case of Echols versus the City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, forthwith, please.
Forty-seven F settlement in the case Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Also approved, also forthwith. Thank you very much, Mr. Burnson. Thank you for heroic, heroic return.
That clears the desk.
That should clear the desk. Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing no adjourning motions?
Oh, yes.
Oops, we have an adjourning motion. Can everybody please rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Wax.
I'd like the council to, I'd like the council to adjourn in the memory of Sarah Moncarsh. She is the mother of Jerry Moncarsh and Jean Moncarsh that many of us know and-
I'll be a second on that, please.
-to our children. I'll give the clerk the pertinent information. She died at ninety-one.
I have one also.
Mr. Burnson.
I don't have the information with me. I'll furnish it to the clerk, but I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of a friend of the family. Barney Bornstein passed away a week ago.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please. Hi.
Well, anyway, so you never know.
Thank you. This council is adjourned. We will not be meeting on Friday. We will see you all on Tuesday.